This is a new procedure. What we're gonna do is, Lauren's gonna announce which proclamation it is. We're gonna have the people come up and stand here. We can have them face that way, so they're all standing here. Lauren's gonna read the proclamation. I'll hand it to them. If anybody wants, well, before I, well, I'll hand it to them if anyone wants to say anything, you can say it, and then we'll move on to the next, and we'll take a group picture. We'll just push our chairs back and close in and take a picture. Is that good?
Do you want a picture per proclamation?
Yes, we'll do it for each one. So move your bag in, mine's in. You good, Ray?
It's like getting ready for takeoff.
Make sure your seats are in an upright position. Is the microphone on?
Yes, sir.
Hey, good evening, everyone. This is our proclamation portion of the business meeting. I'm not calling anything to order, this is just proclamations. So we're gonna go through each one of them. This is just so we can expedite the process, and we don't have to come up and down from the dais, back and forth. So the city manager will announce the proclamations. If you're involved in our organizations, come up here, face the crowd. She'll read the proclamation, I'll hand it to you, and we'll take a group picture, and the council member will speak if they have something to say on the subject, okay? Is that good with everyone? This is our first run-through, so you're the test subjects, okay?
Please be patient with us.
Yes, please be patient.
Those coming to receive the proclamation on human trafficking, if you could please come forward.
And also, if you would like to say something at the mic, you'll have time. So come up here to the dais and face the crowd. Hopefully, as this goes along, we'll get more people coming in for the audience. We've shifted the time 30 minutes, so not, everybody's used to five, so it's a little bit of muscle memory. So come up here and stand, face about, and close it in. Nice and neat. Okay, we don't have to stand up yet, Charlie.
Whereas, "Human trafficking is the recruitment harboring transportation provision or obtaining of a person for labor or services through the use of force, fraud, coercion for the purpose of forced labor or sexual servitude," and whereas "Human trafficking is a $32 billion a year global criminal enterprise and is a crime as well as a civil and human rights violation. And an estimated 25 million people are currently victims of human trafficking for both sex and labor. And whereas, human traffickers prey on their victims by promising a life of hope and greater opportunity while delivering only enslavement. Instead of delivering people to better lives, traffickers unjustifiably profit from the labor and toll of their victims who they force through violence and intimidation to work in the brothels and factories, on farms, and fishing vessels, in private homes, and in countless industries. And whereas, January is National Slavery and Human Trafficking Prevention Month, we commit ourselves to establishing, interacting the evil of enslavement. Human trafficking is a modern form of the oldest and most barbaric type of exploitation, and we proclaim it has no place in our world, our great nation, or our city. And whereas, this month, we do not simply reflect on the appalling reality, we also pledge to do it all in our power to end the horrific practice of human trafficking that plagues innocent victims not only around the world but in our own neighborhoods. And whereas, more awareness and education is crucial to eracting human trafficking in our communities, state, and nation. And whereas, Flagler County Advocates Alliance is working to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts to end human trafficking. And whereas, Human Trafficking Awareness Day is observed on January 11th in municipalities across the country to educate the public and raise awareness about human trafficking. And the city of Palm Coast has a strong commitment to social justice. Now, therefore, be claimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that January 2025 be officially designated as Human Trafficking Awareness Month, and urge all citizens of the city of Palm Coast to become a part of the community response to end human trafficking and send the message that this crime will not be tolerated in our community. Signed, this fourth day of February 2025, Mayor Michael Norris and attests Kaylee Cook, City Clerk.
Okay, who is the representative? Who's? Who is, who is the spokesperson for the, for the alliance? Do we have a spokesperson for the alliance? Who's gonna accept this proclamation? There you go. There's a proclamation, and if you don't, if you can, if you'd like to say something first before we speak, that's well, and can you hold that for us, please? Please, ma'am, go right ahead. But you step up to the microphone. You have to face us. We're getting there, this is a new, okay?
Good evening, my name is Tanya. I am the Sexual Assault Services Advocate in Family Life Center. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to speak with you today about a deeply disturbing issue that continues to affect countless individuals in our communities: sex trafficking in Florida. This crime is not just a distant problem affecting other parts of the world, it is happening right here in our state and our neighborhoods, many of us call home. Florida, due to its tourism-driven economy, extensive coastline, and large population, is considered one of the top states in the United States for human trafficking. According to the National Human Trafficking Hotline, in 2020 alone, Florida reports over 1,400 cases of human trafficking. Of these, a staggering 60% involved human trafficking. These numbers are not just statistics, they represent lives that have been torn apart, often by forced manipulation and deceit. What makes this issue particularly heartbreaking is the age of many of our victims. According to the Florida Department of Children and Families, nearly 30% of identified sex trafficking victims in the state are minors. Men and boys are also victims of trafficking in Florida. Data from the Florida Coalition Against Human Trafficking reveals that around 10% of all trafficking victims in the state are male. This is a reality that's often overlooked but equally as devastating. In conclusion, sex trafficking in Florida is a persuasive and horrific issue that continues to impact countless lives. It is our collective responsibility to work together, advocate for stronger policies, and ensure that our victims of this crime are given the resources they need to heal and reclaim their futures. Let's stand together to say that human trafficking will not be tolerated in our state, and that every victim deserves justice, safety, and a chance at a better life. I just wanted to give you a little example that kinda shocked me. I have data that states age groups. Age of detected victims from 2007 to 2021. Ages zero to eight, 4.8%. Ages nine to 17, 18.6%. Ages 18 to 20 years old, 10.7%. 21 to 23, 10.8%. 24 to 26, 10.4%. 27 to 29, 9.1%. 30 years old to 38, 19.7%. 39 to 47 years old, 9.5%. And 48-plus, 6.4%. This is the data that we're looking at at this age and time on human trafficking. The only way that we can stop this is to talk about it and spread the word. If you see something, say something. I have some information about human trafficking along with the 800 number of 866-347-2423, which is a hotline for human trafficking victims. So I would like to leave this with you, if you don't mind.
Thank you, ma'am. And Brittany, can you get a copy of that? If we can post it on the city Facebook and website, that'd be awesome. Thank you, ma'am. Anyone on the council like to add anything to the comments?
Just thank you for what you do to bring awareness.
Anyone else? In my, in my chosen profession in the military, we dealt with very serious conditions in other countries, and people don't, people don't recognize that there's millions and millions of people that are currently slaves in the world. We talk about slavery in the past, there's slavery going on today. And you said the same thing that I was gonna say. If you see something, say something. There has been countless women and children saved from truck drivers seeing something out of the ordinary at a truck station and saying something and saving someone's life. So with that, ma'am, I thank you, and, and please come up and get your proclamation. Thank you. And we'll close it in and take a quick picture, okay? So Brittany, you, you get us where we need to be. Oh, I'm sorry. We can get the council to close in, and where do you need everyone at? Brittany, talk to us.
I can see everyone except Councilmember Stevens. There we go, now I can see you all. Ready? One, two, three. Thank you.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you. We'll, we'll post that on the, on the website and the Facebook to bring as much attention as we can locally, okay?
I think you guys stick around for all three, right?
So you guys are here for all of them? Okay, we're going to the next one. Here we go. Okay, that's fine, we'll wait till after the last, the last one.
Whereas, under the laws of all 50 states, the U.S. Territories, the District of Columbia, and the federal government, stalking is a crime. And whereas, up to 7.5 million people are stalked in one-year period in the United States, and the majority of the victims are stalked by someone they know. And whereas, three in four women killed by an intimate partner have been stalked by that intimate partner. And whereas, many stalking victims lose time from work experience and serious psychological distress and lost productivity at a much higher rate than the general population. And whereas, many stalking victims are forced to protect themselves by relocating, changing their identities, changing jobs, and obtaining protection orders. And whereas, many stalkers use technology such as cell phones, global positioning systems, cameras, and spyware to monitor and track their victims. And whereas, there is a need for great public awareness about the nature, criminality, and potential deadliness of stalking. And whereas, criminal justice systems can enhance their responses to stalking by regular training and assertive investigation and prosecution of the crime. And whereas, laws and public policies must be continually adapted to keep pace with new tactics used by stalkers. And whereas, communities can better combat stalking by adopting multidisciplinary responses by teams of local agencies and organizations, and by providing more and better victim services. And whereas, Family Life Center is joining forces with victim service providers, criminal justice officials, and concerned citizens throughout Bonnell and the United States to observe National Stalking Awareness Month. And whereas, Flagler County Advocate Alliance is working to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts to end stalking. Now, therefore, be claimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that January 2025 be officially designated as Stalking Awareness Month. In the city of Palm Coast, and applauded the efforts of many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organizations, and the private sector supporters for their efforts in promoting awareness about stalking. Signed, Michael Norris, City of Palm Coast, this day of February 2025.
Thank you, city manager. Who's gonna accept this proclamation? Do we have another spokesperson for this particular? Yes, ma'am. And we'll take, we'll take a picture after the third one. Would you like to say something?
I can.
Please do.
January was a National Stalking Awareness Month. We are in February, and I don't wanna steal the spotlight from the February proclamation, but thank you for allowing us to come, although we are in February. I am privileged to bear witness to and represent victims' views, needs, wishes, and feelings when advocating for them in a variety of settings. Advocates move between tasks such as directly speaking with and supporting victims completing stalking-specific risk assessments and safety plans, discussing victims' experiences, reviewing what action has been taken, and working together to develop a plan of action going forward. Moreover, beyond the practical and sometimes technical advice we give victims, we build a safe space where people can express their sorrows and joys. If you think you might be being stalked, or you know anyone who is being stalked, please reach out to one of our advocates. We are available 24/7 at Family Life Center, and we will be happy to help.
Thank you, ma'am. Does anyone have anything from the dais to say on this proclamation? I think, for me personally, I've, I've known people that have been stalked, and it's not a very good experience, and, and it, it's a traumatic experience for most people that have dealt with it. And I applaud your efforts to bring awareness to it. Brittany, the same thing with this, if we can, if we can make sure it's published, any information on the city website and Facebook, I appreciate it. All right, we got one more, before we take another picture, Brittany, I'm sorry.
Whereas, the city of Palm Coast is committed to the well-being and protection of our youth, the safety of our communities, and to fostering a society based on, based upon mutual respect for one another with zero tolerance for any forms of victimization and abuse. And whereas, teen dating violence is a serious crime that can involve physical, sexual, verbal, emotional, economic, or other abusive behavior, including harassment and cyberbullying via texting, emailing, instant messaging, or posting on social media. And whereas, women who are 16 to 24 years of age are more vulnerable to intimate partner violence, experiencing abuse at a rate nearly triple the national average. And whereas, one in three adolescents in the United States is a victim of physical, emotional, or verbal abuse from a dating partner, a figure that far exceeds rates of other types of youth violence. One in 10 high school students has been purposely hit, slapped, or physically harmed by a boyfriend or girlfriend. One in 10 teens reported sexual victimization from a dating partner. And one in four teens in a relationship report their boyfriend or girlfriend, isolating them from all friends and family. And whereas, young people who have been victimized by an abusive dating partner can experience serious negative effects to their physical and emotional health, and are more likely to be depressed, develop low self-esteem, perform poorly in school, engage in risky behaviors such as drug and alcohol use, or contemplate or attempt suicide. And whereas, while dating violence affects teens across all races, genders, religions, nationalities, sexual orientations, and socioeconomic statuses, it is disproportionately affects lesbian, gay, and bisexual youth who experience rates of intimate behavior violence that are almost twice as high as the rates for heterosexual youth. Transgender youth report even higher rates of victimization and dating violence in their heterosexual peers. And whereas, parents and guardians of victims of dating abuse are often unaware of the problem, studies show that only 33% of teens in abusive relationships ever told anyone about the behavior, and 81% of parents responded either that teen dating abuse is not an issue, or that they did not know whether it was an issue. And whereas, the Flagler County Advocates Alliance is working to increase public understanding of this problem and mobilize community efforts to end teen dating violence. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that February 2025 be officially designated as Teen Dating Violence Awareness Month. And applaud the efforts of the many victim service providers, police officers, prosecutors, national and community organization, and private sector supporters of their efforts in promoting awareness about teen dating violence. Signed, this day, the fourth of February 2025, Mayor Michael Norris.
Okay, ladies and gentlemen, who's, who would like to speak on this subject? I'll give you the proclamation, and you can go right up to the mic, thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening.
My name is Renfer Koppovich, and I serve the Palm Coast community as Family Life Center's youth advocate, providing youth from the ages of four to 17 necessary advocacy and support services as they process and cope with the effects of violence. I would like to thank the city of Palm Coast and the Honorable Mayor for recognizing teen dating violence and continuing the city's commitment to combat the intimate partner violence that affects the young people in our community. This year, the theme for Teen Dating Violence Awareness is Respect, not as a concept but as a mindset. Let us lead with our actions and choices, teaching ourselves and each other what respect looks like through our actions and words. To the community, I would like to say that we can fight this issue together. Arm yourselves with knowledge, educate yourselves on the signs and dynamics of power and control. Reach out and intervene if you can. Have the hard conversations with the youth in your life. Violence thrives in silence and in action. It is only with our collective voice and action that we can end the abuse our young people are experiencing. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone from the dais would like to say anything on this proclamation?
I just really appreciate you all going above and beyond to protect our young people. I think that there's a lot that goes on that we don't know about in our, with our young people, and your advocacy in encouraging them to feel safe and have an outlet of some sort is really important, so thank you.
Anyone else on the dais? I, I really, I really applaud your efforts for promoting, promoting all three of these, because it's, these are serious things that go on in our community, and, and no one, no one, you know, they're living their lives and they're not thinking about it, but I think this one comes back to the same thing. See something, say something, especially if you work in schools, or, or you're in contact with young people, you need, you need, if you notice something out of ordinary, you need to pull them aside and talk to them and, and try to get at the root of it, and, and even contact their parents, because sometimes the parents don't even know what's going on. Anyone with teenagers, half the time, they don't speak to you anyway, even when you're the, you're their parent. So I applaud your efforts, ladies, and thank you so much for coming up and receiving these proclamations. Can we get them a round of applause, please? All right, wanna do one more picture? Okay, Ray. Squeeze in, be my buddy.
Mr. Gambero, yep, right there. All right, ready? One, two, three.
You good, Brian?
Good.
All right, thank you. Thank you, ladies, so much. If you need anything from me, please reach out to my office, and I'm available if you need me.
Thank you all so much.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
I got it, I got it. Hey, Bree!
Okay, our, our last proclamation, is there anybody here to receive this proclamation for Rare Disease Day?
Yeah, no problem.
Do we still wanna go through and read it, city manager?
I think we can, just because the meeting, we still have five minutes until the official meeting starts.
Okay, so there's no one here to receive the proclamation from the city? Okay, buckle up, we're gonna read it anyway. Go ahead, city manager.
Whereas, there are nearly 7,000 diseases and conditions considering rare, each affecting fewer than 200,000 Americans in the United States, according to the National Institutes of Health. And whereas, while each of these diseases may affect small numbers of people, rare diseases collectively affect an estimated 30 million Americans, which is 1 in 10 people. And whereas, many rare diseases are serious and debilitating conditions that have a significant impact on the lives of those affected. And whereas, millions of Americans have rare diseases, but fewer than 500 of the nearly 7,000 rare diseases have FDA-approved treatments. And whereas, individuals and families affected by rare diseases often experience problems such as diagnosis delay, difficulty finding a medical expert, and a lack of access or treatment to ancillary services. And whereas, the National Organization for Rare Disorders is organizing a National Observance of Rare Disease Day on February 28th, 2025. And whereas, thousands of patients, caregivers, medical professionals, researchers, and others across the state of Florida will participate in that observant, observance. Now, therefore, be it proclaimed by the mayor and the city council of the city of Palm Coast, Florida, that February 28th, 2025 be officially designated as Rare Disease Day. Signed, this fourth day of February 2025, City of Palm Coast Mayor Michael Norris, attests Kaylee Cook, City Clerk.
Thank you, city manager. Does anyone from the dais have anything to say concerning this proclamation? Okay, I'll say something. I lost my sister in early January to a rare cancer. Well, one of the, one of the cancers she had was a rare cancer. So I think everybody in this room has probably been affected by something that's out of the ordinary, and, and they haven't found, you know, a way to track it or treat it. Bringing awareness to it is great for our city. Brittany, if you could, please make sure we do something on the 28th, post it on our Facebook and our, and our website, please. Was, would anybody, we got a couple of minutes left, would anybody like to, to speak on this subject from the, the audience? No one? Okay, so a round of applause for this proclamation, please.
Mayor, city council, we're gonna stay live, we just have a minute left, so we're gonna stay live, but we just can't start the meeting until officially 6 o'clock.
Yes, ma'am. Business Meeting. Today is Tuesday, February 4th, 2025, at 6:00 p.m. We're in the City Hall Community Wing, and if you could, please stand with me for a Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) one nation under God, in the temple, with liberty and justice for all.
I forgot, moment of silence, please. Okay, thank you very much, you may be seated. This is a new process, so we're gonna be doing the proclamations at 5:30, so if you plan on attending, please come for the proclamations too, so we can cut down on the chatter coming into the room. Ms. Cook, if you could, please call the roll.
Mayor Norris.
Here.
Gary.
Present.
Councilmember Gambero.
Here.
Councilmember Miller.
Here.
Councilmember Stevens.
Here.
All members are present.
Thank you, ma'am. We were, we were gonna open with public comment, public participation. Please, please be reminded to be respectful and note defamatory comments, and keep your, keep your comments to three minutes, and please state your name for the record. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Weiss.
Jean Weiss Quill Harlow. Good evening, Mayor, Councilwoman, Councilman.
And get close to the mic, will you, please, Gina?
I'm here today to speak about the Airport Overlay Ordinance that they're trying to pass in March, the county is, in lieu of a county workshop to be held tomorrow. This ordinance has been sitting on the county desk since 2023. I find it quite ironic, since around this time, we had sent an attorney letter of demand to- to Al Hadid, the county attorney, about the county never obtaining aviation easements for the surrounding communities of the airport for planes that fly below 500 feet. As you all well know, there are student flight school planes flying 200, 300, 400 feet, performing dangerously low touch-and-gos, of which are not takeoff and landings, hundreds of times, daily, 24/7 over our homes. Added to this is the fact that we have no radar and no air traffic control after the airport operation hours. These dangerously low touch-and-gos occur beyond midnight. You had a public hearing last October, when a councilman had asked Roy Ziegler, the airport director, "Isn't it dangerous not to have radar in lieu of over 170,000 student flight school yearly operations?" Roy Ziegler's answer is, "Yes, it is dangerous." This ordinance that the county is trying to pass is not good for your citizens, and the county needs your votes to pass it. This ordinance bypasses the need for the county to obtain aviation easements by rezoning and changing land use maps. It essentially leaves your citizens and their properties at the mercy of a poorly-run, mismanaged airport, and a county administration who, as in the past, up until now, still continues to turn a blind eye to the dangerous operation of student flight school mills, who yearly make billions of dollars. They are businesses, and they operate as LLCs. Once again, we are pleading, please, this time, you can do something. Your hands are not tied. Do not vote yes on this ordinance. Why would you when the previous council in '23 did not? It is written in your 2025 Comprehensive Plan a clause that you will protect your citizens. The county is not allowing you to do your jobs. In fact, it's downright manipulating, unlawful, and unconstitutional. And I also hear, well, you don't have the numbers of people complaining about the airport. It doesn't matter what came first. What matters is what's in writing. It's facts and its lives. Most people can't come to these meetings. My community is a blue-collar community. People come home tired, wanting to put food on the table. People are seniors, they're tired. Okay, there's actually war going on above our homes. There's a war being waged over our homes by foreign flight school planes. Your citizens are in a lot of danger, and they are afraid. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wise. Next participant, please. Hello, Kathy.
Kathy Davidson, Palm Coast, Florida. I am fighting for our Airbnb. I'd like to repeat your words that you spoke, Mayor Mike Norris. Palm Coast is not an HOA, so to treat it like an HOA where Airbnb is concerned is really unjust to those that are actually following the rules and not causing an issue for their neighborhood. We don't have issues with our neighborhood. Should Palm Coast continue to have a homeowners' association philosophy? This is what you said. Palm Coast is not an HOA. That's the mayor that we voted for. That mindset right there. This is a working-class community, you said. People say this is a retirement community. I'm sorry, sir, ma'am, this is not a retirement community. 65 and older, I think is like a third of our population. We're not talking about painting houses, we're not talking about the vehicles in the driveway. We're talking about us running our business that we've ran for almost 10 years successfully, without any issues that have been major stuff for our neighborhood. We have a police officer next door, we have a firewoman next door, we have great neighbors, and they have known that we have an Airbnb for a very long time. Palm Coast Fire Chief Kyle Berryhill, who was a guest on the Free For All Friday, gave a resident's perspective on the commercial. We're talking about vehicle, but we're Airbnb. I'm talking about the mindset. I feel like that there ought to be a path for us to support people that are working hard. We're working hard. We do very well at what we do. That would be us. If it was a 50/50, and on one side is dramatically impacted, and on the other one is inconvenient, I'm more on the side of dramatically impacted. We are dramatically impacted by your decision. So thank you, Berryhill, the fire chief, for making that statement. The current city council with four members seem to be amenable to ease restrictions on both cases. We're asking you to make some less restrictions, less government, where Airbnb is concerned. Of course, if there's issues, do what you gotta do to curb them, but for those who are not, like ourselves, who are doing well, have done well for about 10 years, there should not be these extra stuff going on. We're not talking about painting the house. This is, we're talking about our short-term business that we have ran successfully. We're asking you to make an amendment to be, for those who are not breaking the law, they're running their business successfully. I have been told to fight for our business. I'm doing exactly that. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Joel Davidson, Palm Coast, also fighting for our Airbnb. And again, what we're asking for is a simple exception for those of us who live in our homes, and we are our own HOA within our homes. Our rules are stricter than anything anybody could come up with, except for 10 years, we have very comfortably set the limits of the amount of people that we will accept in our homes. For example, if five people request one bedroom, we've turned that down a couple of times. We've made, done well doing our own rules. How many people are we affecting? Now, I've heard everybody say there's 275 short-term rental owners in the City of Palm Coast. On Airbnb, I did an exhaustive search. In Airbnb, there are 97 homeowners that have home rentals that they do not live in. There are 30 homeowners, like us, that rent individual bedrooms that live in the home, or some of those 30 people, like my daughter, don't live in the home, but they live very close to the Airbnb rental. So we're talking about 30 people that need an exception. I just spoke to a nice gentleman today that lives in the C-section. He rents out two bedrooms. He lives there. He has personally had three Airbnb guests in the C-section, bought canal homes because they stayed in his Airbnb. So apparently, the problems in the canal section aren't as widespread, even though there are problems, and I'm glad everybody came up with rules for those people that don't live in their homes, and they're from out-of-state or corporations. Now, the European Village is exempted. Why? Because they have their own rules. What does the European Village say? Four people in a one-bedroom, speaking to the head of the European Village Homeowners' Association. I contacted the Hammock, which is also exempted. I said, "Can four people stay in one bedroom for a week?" Yes, of course, one-bedroom suites are set up to take care of four people. There are no restrictions at Hammock Beach to how many people. That covers Hammock Beach, that covers the Cinnamon Beach, Yacht Harper Village, et cetera. So we all voted for governments to be less intrusive in our lives, and we're being intruded on for something we've done successfully for 10 years. All we're asking for is that simple exception that was there at one time, that council member suggested that we put back in. It's only common sense. And as we said, Mayor, what my wife read, that's the mayor we voted for, not the mayor that's saying, "No, Joel and Kathy, you can't control your own house that you live in." We're not stupid. We're not gonna have 35 wild, crazy people in our house. We're gonna have 16 Chinese people that are traveling together as a family that want to stay in one house. We're gonna have 12 people, that's a football team, soccer team, et cetera. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Joy Cook, Seminole Woods. Good evening, Council. As some of you know, I've been the voice of Seminole Woods for the last two years. And, I'm sorry. And I'm very familiar with the Kaskage Project and of the pending lawsuit. A little over two years ago, we started our fight against this developer and his attempt to put a palm edge right in our backyards. We showed up, I'm sorry, we showed other residents of Palm Coast how to stand up against the last administration and won. I would like to believe that one of the reasons is, I'm sorry, I would like to believe that one of the reasons is why we have a new mayor and three council members sitting in front of us right now, and representing the people for the first time in decades. Ray Stevens, we are very happy to see you sitting in District 3 for our neighbors. For, you don't know, he is one of our Seminole Woods residents. And of course, Councilwoman Pontieri, who has been a true advocate for us for the last two and a half years. This is very refreshing to see and to be up here. We have a different reason for this time. We are here to give our support to the council and to the city, not to give in to the demands of this and settle with this developer. After reviewing hours of meetings and audios, I have seen no evidence of infringement. Just so our residents understand the process of the application, and I'll explain it as quickly as I can. The developer presents an application, and there's a time and a matter where it goes through the, I'm gonna try to pass along here, because there's a lot here, the review board, and then it goes to council for first read. Okay? Then there is a second read through council. That second read should be final. Okay? Then it moves, I'm sorry, I'm trying to just pass things, so I make my three minutes here. That second read should be approval. That should be the final approval from council, and then moves on to state. If I'm correct, and missed a couple of things, I apologize. So almost a year later, this developer, who didn't get what he wants, threatens our city with a lawsuit. Our city council's decision should be final, should remain just that, final. This threat of a lawsuit opens up doors for a new loophole for all developer builders to use as a negotiation tool. If they don't want, if they don't get what they want, they will sue, in hopes that the city will settle and get them closer to their original goal. I am guessing that you're asking for more homes. And I said, "They tried to set the rehearing and attempted to fool the residents to add an additional 100 homes, and they are still pushing for a total of 850 units," which was the number at the time. What is $12 million worth? 200, 250 homes? Which would bring that closer to the original goal of 250. Okay? The problem is 250, I mean, I'm sorry, that problem is that number will not support the, I'm sorry, I'm gonna lose my time, that's why I'm slapping. I'm gonna have somebody else finish this for me, I apologize.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. No, go, yes, ma'am, you come forward.
Good evening. Wendy Tramarchi, newer resident here in Flagler County. I am still on the board, a 10th-year member of the Indian River County Humane Society, so I do know a lot about humane societies. This humane society has many, many issues. No structured training for volunteers at the shelter by other volunteers, and a short generic video. There are many great training programs out there to choose from, such as Fear Free Training, which many shelters use. Perhaps if better trained volunteers would not get bit some multiple times, and are these incidents reported. We are one of only 13 counties in the state without a second outlet for homeless animals to go to for food, care, and shelter. If the Flagler Humane Society say they can no longer intake more animals, whether they are full or other reasons, where do our abandoned animals go? Left on the street is where they end up. I see online people asking for help because the shelter is not accepting surrenders. Are they full? Maybe that's why we have an overabundance of loose dogs and cats. The shelter charges for surrenders. When people are in dire situations, usually the last thing they have is extra money to surrender their animal. So many animals are dumped on the streets in this county because they can't or won't pay the fee. Flagler Humane Society will be coming to you soon for more money and helping them to grow. Until a few months ago, when some of us brought issues with how the shelter is being run, they admitted in a joint workshop with you all in the county that there was no money, no plan, no space, or land to properly grow. They have just put out emails on Nextdoor and Nextdoor for animal lovers to fill the room, to show support for them on the 25th of February joint meeting with you all. Building a new annex or building on their property is great for more space, but will it have separate air system for rooms for holding animals under quarantine that they do not have now? Before a new building is constructed, money needs to be spent on a full-time vet, a proper working board, proper training, indoor/outdoor runs, and updating fully the current building. You can't just add space. We have a great sheriff's department, which is where county animal control officers should be overseen for accountability and proper training. Then perhaps we would stop having issues with an officer being fired by the last board, rehired after they were gone, and is now up on animal cruelty charges. The animal control officers in the city are wonderful. They do a great job. You should all be very proud of their efforts. So perhaps on the 25th, all the people that are asking to come should know the other side of shelter issues. The county and city need to move forward with having its own shelter for unwanted animals picked up on their streets. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Ann Thompson. I'm also talking about the Flagler Humane Society. The Flagler Humane Society is taxpayer-funded and has no accountability. They've been asked by the county for an independent order over five, audit, I beg your pardon, over five months ago, and still have not done so. Charity Navigator only gave them two out of four stars because of no accountability and their finances. Key metrics they received full credit on were having a majority of independent board members. This is not true. Four out of the six are married couples, including the president and her husband. How do you think those votes go? Secondly, they receive credit for independent board the size of 11 members. They currently have only six. The vet of record with the state is Dr. Roberto Aguilar, who owns and runs his own private practice, and is generally only at the shelter one day a week. This is one of the reasons so many animals can be injured and in pain for days without proper care. The shelter admitted they do not do background check or drug testing on employees, resulting in offenders with violent records being employed with issues resulting. There have been employees and volunteer theft, which we believe has never been reported to the sheriff's department, or has it been kept quiet. Florida state law requires a nonprofit organization's fiduciary responsibility, which means the board has a legal and ethical obligation to actively investigate and recover stolen funds. They must also report incidents to relevant authorities like the IRS and the sheriff's department. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and the City Council, for listening to our concerns.
State your name for the record.
My name is Joanne Volpe, and I live in Seminole Woods. The intersection between Seminole Woods Boulevard and Sesame Boulevard on the north and the south is very dangerous. The speed limit is 55 miles per hour, and has become very congested and very dangerous. I'd like to know if there's any way you can reduce the speed limit just on that section or between Seminole Woods and Sesame on the north and on the south, and probably up towards US-1, to reduce the speed limit on that road. It's 55 miles an hour, and obviously, most people go very much faster than that. So is there any way that, I don't know if I still have to get a petition together or anything like that, but I'd like it to go down to 45 miles per hour, not just from the north Sesame Boulevard and to US-1. That's the most dangerous area. Now, if it's 40, I mean, that would help, you know? So then the other situation is Sesame Boulevard, which is 45 miles an hour presently, and throughout the whole north and south. If that can be reduced to 40 miles an hour, that would probably help a little bit, because people walk on those streets and there's no sidewalks. There's sidewalks, there's some sidewalks on Sesame, but on the side streets, they're not. That's the other thing. The other concern is, I've got, I've got some, okay, the other concern would be, can you put speed detectors or something like that to show people what they're doing on these roads? Can you put speed bumps? Speed bumps, probably not a good idea, because the road's like, right now, 55 miles an hour, so that's probably not gonna work. The other problem is Smith Trail. Smith Trail is a very dangerous trail. There are aggressive drivers that drive up and down Smith Trail especially, many times, always, all the time. That Smith Trail is 30 miles an hour, number one. Number two, I'd like to know what the speed limit is on the cul-de-sacs that go into these, into Smith Trails. the, into these, into Smith Trails communities. I don't know really what the speed limit is because it's not posted, just turning into the cul-de-sacs from Smith Trail. There could be some speed bumps could go in there. So, yes, there's aggressive drivers, and aggressive drivers coming into some of these cul-de-sacs off of Smith Trail. So if there's any way you can consider reducing some of these speed limits, we'd really appreciate it. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thanks. Good evening. I'm Liz Shanahan Afferty, and I moved into Seminole Woods in September of 2021, and I sent you all emails last night. I wanted to talk to you about the returning of the Cascades development. Originally, in 2004, the comp plan was limited to 416 homes. Almost 20 years later, in 2022 or 2023, the developer wanted to rezone, increase density, and had add 400 units of apartments. That reading failed. Your constituents attended and said, no. We came to these meetings speaking about what an invasion of privacy, it was being detrimental to our beautiful Seminole Woods area. We did not want the additional apartments in our single-family neighborhood. You opened up your eyes, listening to homeowner after homeowner speak on this topic. As a result, council said no to the apartments for the final time. Your residents applauded your decision. The developer came back for the second reading and to keeping the original 416 homes. Of course, the reading passed. A great victory for Seminole Woods homeowners that day. Fast forward to the current. I understand now the developer is now blaming the city for lost revenue and wants more homes. You guys did nothing wrong. You fought for what was right, for the city and your residents. You made a very good business decision. This decision should stand. Please do not let these developers or builders or attorneys strong-arm you in revisiting your good and binding decision. Stand your ground and say no for the last time. On another note, somebody was speaking about traffic lights. Well, with all the homes that we've been putting up around here, it's a little bit under 1,000 single-family homes and townhomes that are now under construction or in work or in the approval stage. Calculate out how many that's actually going to be in cars, over 3,800 cars probably or more, because many homeowners have over two cars nowadays. Just drive around the city and you'll see. It's also going to add about 7,600 trips on Seminole Woods Parkway Boulevard. Traffic lights are needed very badly, several intersections, Seminole Palms, Citation, and Yule Turn, Seminole Woods and Sesame, and Grand Landings Parkway and Universal. Come take a drive around and see how people speed. And please, no blinking yellow turn signals anywhere. They're dangerous, especially rush hour and in the middle of the night. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council, Bill Cook, Seminole Woods. You're going to hear a lot of this, but over a year later, here we are once again talking about the Cascade subdivision of 850 units that were voted on by the, or that was voted when the subject came up by the previous council, the limit to 416 single-family homes and exclude apartments. I, like many others, are here in support of the City Council opposing resolution to a developer who says that their rights are infringed upon. Sounds like me, sounds like to me using an act passed in 1995 as a last-ditch effort for the developer to bully the City Council into bowing to their demands. What statement will this send to our other developers who decide to use the same tactics to get what they want? In my opinion, 416 units is 416 units more than any of us wanted. This also opens the idea of, once again, adding apartments. But we all understand that this growth is inevitable and that there is open land, if there's open land, there's a way to make money. Then it's a matter of time. Our quiet, peaceful town turns into a big city with all its headaches and trauma that many people who moved here did so to get away from it all. Overdevelopment, underdeveloped infrastructure can create a recipe for economic disaster. It's bad enough when the developer promised us a buffer as part of the promise along with the 416 units, but the land is cleared to the street and wide open. Last thing, walls look stupid. Thank you.
Don't change the time, Ms. Cook. Ms. Wise, you have his remaining 1:25.
Yeah.
Because I can't let you speak again.
Oh, so.
You only get three minutes. So I'm going to give you the remainder of his time. You can go ahead. You've got a minute and a half.
Okay. So what's the number this time? What's 12 million worth? 200, 250 homes? Which would bring them very close to the original goal of 850 units. The problem is that you can't fit that many homes in that area, so they would have to go up. So what's after that? Rezoning. And we're back to square one, apartments or townhouses. If you reviewed a property on the appraiser's site, it has a listed Seminole Palm townhouses in the property details. A townhouse is not a single-family residence, it's a single-family dwelling. Talking about putting the cart before the horse. Back to the word, final. If the residents have to accept the word final, so do the developers and builders. There have been a PUD plan on that property since 2005, single-family, 416 homes. The council gave them an additional 98 on the Hook property that belongs to JTL. Final means final. To give in to their demands takes away your power, takes away your vote. We put you in those seats for reasons. You know what my response would say to any settlement is zero. I have faith in our city lawyers that they will put up the good fight, and we will come with our victory for the residents, especially when it was the developer's lawyer who directed the council to go back to the original PUD. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Gina. Yes, ma'am.
Hi. Excuse me. My name is Anna Gibson. I've been a resident of Palm Coast, Florida since 2012, who has established two businesses in the state of Florida, has volunteered at Epic Church, participated in the Waterway Cleanup, and STEM Awareness for Women. I'm here today to offer my thoughts on the recent job candidate search for city manager. I applied for the city manager position in December and was not presented to the City Council last week because my resume was triaged by SRG. I would have graciously accepted my fate had it not been for the comments of this very City Council and the qualifications of the other applicants. Multiple candidates whom SRG had selected to highlight during the meeting had previous interactions with SRG in other searches, admitting the personal biases toward other candidates that have failed to be hired for other city manager positions. When I applied, SRG never spoke to me to understand how my background and skills may be relevant. You specifically stated you wanted to see more Palm Coast residents apply, which I am. You have also said you wanted to show preference to people with non-traditional backgrounds, which I have. I started my technology career as a plant maintenance consultant, who was promoted every two years until I reached a project management position for capital projects. I've consulted and/or worked directly for several Fortune 500 companies, and my last corporate role reported directly to the COO in an effort to increase new revenue streams within the organization. I have been department heads of various business functions, including capital spending, building partnerships, and portfolio management. In the City Council meeting, I was not highlighted due to a lack of qualifications, yet you were presented Cynthia Raleigh, who has only managed a $7 million budget and only had 40 FTEs reporting to her. I personally have managed a $10 million budget and had 50-plus FTEs reporting to me. Additionally, you were reported with William Lawrence, who only had an educational background of an associate's degree. I am currently pursuing my doctoral degree at Gonzaga University and hold a bachelor's and master's in business management and operational excellence, which is all about increasing value and reducing operational efficiency inefficiencies. Do you still feel I should not have been, I have been triaged as a candidate who was not qualified? After watching the City Council meeting, it is apparent SGA is ignoring the City Council's requests. If I held the city manager position, I would be presenting a backup plan and the termination clause of our agreement with them. Moving forward for every candidate, I want to know how long SGR has known them and whether the candidates have purchased any services from SGR in the past, because shortly after I received my rejection letter, they sent me an email advertising their resume writing packages for sale. I would also like to know the candidate's salary expectations and how much SGR will make should the candidates be hired, because let's be honest, SGR has no incentive to hire a Palm Coast resident, because it's based on a percentage of their package, total compensation package. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're going, we're slightly over on our 30 minutes for public comment, so we're going to take, Mark, if you can hold yours till later, we're going to take two more residents, and that's going to be it. We've got to move on to the city business. Ms. Celia, go right ahead.
My name is Celia Puglisi, in Palm Coast since 1991. I'm mainly going to speak about two issues here. One is that city, please, do not agree with this incoming meeting with the county trying to change ordinance regarding the airport. The airport is a problem for the residents, especially around the area of the airport, and it's a danger to all of us, because the increased amount of schools and pilots learning there, and it's going to get worse. I heard that the county is inviting also, or were requested, to be training for Blackhawk helicopters, which are very, very noisy, and we just seen what happened in Washington, DC. We don't want to become another news. There was an Embry-Riddle aircraft a few years ago that dropped a door in Collingwood Court in the C-section of Palm Coast. The more students, the more touch and goes, the worse everything gets. So please, the city, do not agree with the county on changing this ordinance in favor of the airport. We are subsidizing an airport in this county, all of us, with, in 2022, a year report, now almost a million losses. Now, on 2023, I don't have yet, the 2024, it's almost 2 millions in the red, and we all pay for that. Now, all these grants that they give from FAA, they don't come for the losses in red. Look at the financials. One other thing I'm asking this meeting, please, the Cascades, do not give in, because then every other developer is going to do the same thing. We have plenty of resources for not approving those additional units. We don't have enough water, we don't have the sewer plant, we don't have the roads, the services that we need here. We need more roads east and west, north and south. We don't have any of the, of the infrastructure. That's a reason for this council to say, no. You're not violating any Bird-Harris Act. The developer is totally misinterpreting that act. That doesn't allow him to have more units and allow him to sue us for $12.2 million. Please, put up a fight. Learn from the residents of Flagler Beach. They were sued by the developer, okay? And they, they were sued, but on court, they won. It was their First Amendment right. So we need to please take an example of these people that come here to intimidate us. And one other thing for the city, please, don't waste any more time on changing, you know, meetings to change the name of this and that building. Doesn't work. To go and try to sell our amenities, doesn't work. Let's please dedicate to what we need now, and especially the issues of people being flattered on their homes, and all those other issues that people come here and ask you for. Thank you for those councilmen, Mr. Ray Stevens, Mrs. Ponchieri, and Mayor, because I know, I don't know about Mr. Miller, but I know you are in your side. Please do what we ask you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. This will be the last person for public participation.
That's a tough little girl.
Please know that we have public participation at the end of the business meeting also, but we are limited to 30 minutes. Yes, yes, sir.
I'm just saying, make it count, that's a tough little girl.
Go right, go right ahead, sir.
Maybe 16 years old, a long story, I won't go to heaven, okay?
State your name, sir.
Here's a story. Congratulations for you, you got voted in.
Sir.
Congratulations that you got voted in on your post in the election.
Sir, sir, sir. State your name for the record.
Oh, I apologize. I'm sorry. My name is Wilfredo Yeras.
Thank you, sir.
And I lived in Palm Coast over 25 years, okay? I'm sorry about my loud voice, but that's how I was raised, I run back to mama, okay? Now, here we go. Okay, here we go. I'm presenting this for we, the people, we, the seniors, okay? For the past 25 years, I've seen, we had three pools here, okay? We had three December, we got the other two pools, which is closed out, I'm a little nervous, okay? Yet in the eyes, okay, let me just get this, before the committee, zero results. We are the pioneers of Palm Coast community for years, yet in your eyes, we do not count. By the way, we, the pioneers, voted for you and pay your salary, and it's a nice salary, but you're doing a good job. By the way, all of this is just a redundant sequence. I've been here eight years fighting with these people, and you're not to blame. Thank God you're not to blame, okay? But zero has been done. At one time, there were three, okay, here we go. If I wanted to ice skate, I would go to, I would go to Alaska. No, I went camp to Palm Coast because I wanted to live my last year swimming and enjoying my life. By the way, I speak loud because I swim almost a mile every day. That's another story, okay? Has the population of Palm Coast increased or decreased? Okay, we know the answer to that one. No, no, no. Are there terms of, what about the accommodations for the increases? The infrastructure? Zero, okay? Now, daily swimming, does that increase your longevity and give you good health? I don't know, I'm asking that question. See, I wish I could read a rate, okay? Please, we pay your taxes. We want to enjoy Palm Coast and the beautiful years we have left. The super, oh, I joined the YMCA in Oldman Beach, okay? And let me tell you something, we should take, not you guys, the people in charge of the pools. I take a bus, I'll pay for the bus, I'll pay for the gas, okay? Take them over there, okay? And see the job these people are doing. I drive 15 minutes every day with a partner or something like that to go there and swim. It's 25 lanes, you would not believe what you have over there. Day and night, the bathrooms look like you're in, you're in the Taj Mahal. You go look at the bathrooms and the pools over here, it's a disaster. It looks like a slump, because I know about slums, I come from a slump, okay? I've been working 25, 70 years, day and night. Thank God I did well, okay? Thank God I did well. My kids did well. Why? Because I want results. And I know you guys are going to give us results. Again, I swim over there, no problem, beautiful, you can swim all the lanes you want, and it's packed. Thank you, I'm sorry for my voice, but God bless, okay? God bless America, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, sir. With that, we'll close public comment and our public participation. Bring it back to the dais. Would anybody like to discuss any of the matters on the, that were brought up? Maybe not item three? Anyone? Go ahead. Yes, councilman.
Yeah, so to the gentleman's comments, I just want you to know that I had a good initial meeting, myself, the city manager, and others, with the leadership from the YMCA of Volusia County. We're looking at ways on how we can improve. It's part of our strategic priorities to bring the YMCA here, but also, as my fellow council member has said repeatedly, we need to address the concerns of the citizens now and make sure that we improve that. So more to follow. We're having conversations with the Y because of the great quality that they do provide and seeing what the options are.
Let me comment one thing, you are the first person.
No, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
You are the first person.
Sir! We allowed you your time, listen to what we have to say from the dais.
So, so to all of our residents that use the pool, we're having meetings to find solutions. More to follow.
Anyone else? Yes, city.
Mayor, if I can, I just wanted to let City Council know, I did take the note about the speeding concerns on Sesame Smith Trail, and I will follow up with our sheriff's office to see if we can't run a special detail down there and our traffic division to produce a study and then bring you those results.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone else? Any of the items that were discussed by the citizens? Back to your point, sir, we, I think, I don't know, city manager, has everyone met about the Y?
Um.
Are we missing anyone?
Maybe councilmember Stevens, I'm not sure if you've received a briefing, there's been some internal discussions and external, but we'd be happy to set something up for you.
Okay. Everybody on this council, minus Mr. Stevens, has had a meeting with the representatives from the YMCA, and we are actively working on it. So be assured that we're doing everything we can to get a Y here. The airport, we have a meeting, Ms. Gina, we talked about that tomorrow, so hopefully that'll be brought up in that. Seminole Woods, city manager just discussed checking the traffic down there, and yes, we do have a presentation coming to us about turn lanes down on the south end, and I know as it grows, we need to as it grows, we need to take steps as far as putting signals in. So we are aware and we just recently had that accident down there where one of our fire police were injured and we don't know if that's the cause of it, but we are actively, actively working that issue. The city manager search, I don't know if that lady's still here, but we are, we will be reexamining and I don't know how they're gonna queue it up, but stay in contact with us. Any, anything else? Any other comments? Okay, we're gonna move on to item F, the minutes. We need to approve the minutes for the city council meeting, January 21st, the business meeting, and January 28th, the workshop meeting minutes.
To approve the minutes?
Second. We got a motion by Councilwoman Pontieri, second by Councilwoman Miller. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
You have it, Ms.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We'll move on to item G, ordinances for the first read. Council?
Yes, ordinance 2025, amend and restate fair housing ordinance.
Mayor, city council, as Ms. Jackie is getting started to put up her presentation, just wanna remind you, this was heard at your workshop, but there was a request to delay. We also included the red line version of the ordinance and Ms. Jackie is here to answer any questions you may have.
Not a presentation this time. Jackie, you're just here to answer questions?
Okay. Is there anything I can answer at this time? I did do the slide that Pontieri asked for in regards to CBGG funding since 2020 to 2024 and these are the numbers that was requested.
Thank you so much for including this. I appreciate the numbers. I think it's really important to see exactly what CBGG does for our community, so I appreciate it. The only issue that I had and I'm thankful we got the red line version because when I went and looked at the red line version of this proposed ordinance, I noticed that in the definition section, we have included in the definition of sex as gender identity and I would make a motion to approve the ordinance, but with the amendment to remove gender identity from the definition of sex. It's not a protected class, I don't feel like it should be in the ordinance.
I'll second that. Yeah, we gotta second. Do we have consent to change that one line item? Do we need that, council? What do we need? Do we have to vote to amend?
It's a, she have a second, so now you do discussion and then you can put it out to public comment.
Discussion?
Yeah, I just wanna speak to, I, I fully agree with the vice mayor here with the definitions here of gender identity and things like that. I don't think they have any place in here. I don't know if they, we're trying to follow some higher level wording in terms of the requirements for that and funding, but from my perspective, they're inappropriate and shouldn't be in here.
Anyone else?
Got support.
Okay. We'll open it up for, is everyone else good with as is other than that one change? We're good?
I don't have any other issues.
Okay, we'll open it up for public comment. Any public comment on this?
I would like the city, Celia Puglisi again, I would like the city maybe to make it more widely known for those that can use the, the different fair housing funds and how they should apply and everything, because I have seen people in the city that they don't even know that it exists and they really need it, you know? So I don't know if this is within this ordinance, but it would be interesting that probably in the city website, because these are monies that we get from the feds or the state, correct? So should be available to those that need it.
Can you pause your time for a second, Ms. Cook? Jackie, we do, we do advertise it, advertise this across the board, right? Everything as far as subsidized housing?
Yes, sir, there is a actual webpage for on the city's website that talks about it and there's online application and I'm available at any time for anyone's comments.
Yes, ma'am, and you work in conjunction with the county?
Yes, I do, with the ship program.
There's two pots of money, right, for, for subsidized housing in the county?
Correct, there's ship program, which is state funded and then CBGG is federal funded.
Okay. All right, are you good, Ms. Celia? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else for anything related to this item? Okay, with that, I'll close public comment. Bring it back to the dais. Make a motion, someone make a motion to approve? We don't need a motion to approve, but we already have one.
We have the motion in a second.
Okay, call the vote, Ms. Cook?
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. Okay, we're gonna move on to item H, resolutions. Council?
Resolution 2025, approving a design contract with CBH Incorporated for the design of Old Kings Road South Phase Two project.
Mayor, city council, as Carl's getting ready, just wanna introduce this item. Many of you in your briefings understand that this was a previous legislative priority that we did receive appropriations fund from and it was in the tune of $500,000. So this is us moving forward with the design phase, so Carl's going to explain the details of this project.
Ma'am, go right ahead, Carl.
Yes, good evening, Carl Cooley, Director of Stormwater Engineering. So tonight, we're gonna discuss Old Kings Road South Phase Two Special Assessment District. And I'm gonna go through some history regarding Old Kings Road and what that Special Assessment District is. So back in March of 2005, city council created the Old Kings Road Special Assessment District via an ordinance with approval from the affected landowners to widen and improve Old Kings Road between Highway 100 and Palm Coast Parkway. The project was designed in two phases, the first of which extends from Highway 100 to the intersection of Old Kings Road and Town Center Boulevard, which was referred to as Phase One, and the second of which extends from the northern terminus of Phase One to Palm Coast Parkway, labeled as Phase Two. On June 17th of 2008, the city council adopted a final assessment resolution, which among other things approved an assessment apportionment methodology, imposed non-ad valorem special assessments or assessments against real property within the district, the assessed property, to pay a portion of the project costs associated with the project and establish a maximum project cost to be recovered through special assessment of $50,090,000. To facilitate the long-term financing for the project, the city council adopted resolution authorizing the issuance of up to $50,090,000 in special assessment bonds for the Old Kings Road Special Assessment District secured by special assessments. In July 2008, the city received judicial validation to issue the bonds and levy the special assessments in accordance with the relevant ordinance and landowner consent. Due to the national economic downturn and market uncertainties, the city could not issue the bonds and postpone the collection of special assessments. In January of 2009, city council adopted a resolution authorizing the commencement of construction and appropriation for Phase One funds. In December 20th of 2011, the city council adopted a resolution electing to use a uniform method of collecting non-ad valorem assessment for more than one year. And then in 2013, the city council adopted a supplemental resolution for repayment of funds advanced by the city to construct Phase One and provide funding for Phase Two. So we're here today to talk specifically about Phase Two and our design agreement to move the project along to the next phase. So we'll, we'll start by, I guess, going over what the Old Kings Road jurisdiction is. There was a transfer of land to the city that occurred in November of 2003. The Board of County Commission of Flagler County approved to transfer the transportation jurisdiction of the portion of Old Kings Road located within the city boundaries from North of 100 to Forest Grove Drive. 2005, city council created the Old Kings Road Special Assessment District. And there's, there's various things that occurred, whoops, going back here. So there's transfer of land, the district was created, there was landowner request to modify and realign Phase One of the road and there was gonna be phased construction and there's various agreements with those property owners. So today, we're talking about Phase Two and it's been broken up into a 2A and 2B due to the cost of the project and it was part of that revised resolution of the Special Assessment District where 2A will extend where just south of Town Center Boulevard. You can see it hashed in yellow, which is 2A, which goes up to about the Tuscana entrance. And then 2B would be the remaining section north, almost up to Palm Coast Parkway. A portion south of Palm Coast Parkway was constructed when that roadway was just widened a couple of years ago. This also project entails the realigning of Town Center Boulevard and forelaning the segment of Town Center Boulevard and Royal Palms to address the intersection improvements at that location as well as intersection at Old Kings Road. So we, we called that, that's an additional project that was in, in disgust in the scope of work for today. So the, the design fee is roughly $6 million. There are numerous pots of money. There are certain obligations of requirements of who needs to pay for what regarding this project. The utility funds has worked within this corridor to extend the water main, reclaim and do some utility relocate. So there's some design work for utility funds, which is accounting for about 15% of that cost. Stormwater funds is funding about 14% and this is strictly associated with Lehigh Canal. As part of our stormwater master plan, that canal has been identified as a constriction point for outflowing of our water. So we have some modeling and options to look at ways to improve conveyance there with some either box covers under the road or potentially even extending the bridge by working with DOT and Federal Highway. We have the DOT grant, that's that state appropriation. Then we have town center transportation impact fees. So there, there's a resolution as part of the, the town center where impact fees collected within town center will remain to be used within town center. Royal Palms Parkway was the first roadway for those funds to be spent on once it reaches a certain traffic level. So looking at that last segment of Royal Palms from the town center, well, just west of the town center intersection going out to Old Kings Road and forelaning that piece and looking at the intersection, that's gonna help, those funds will help support that part of the project. City transportation impact fees, so part of the project entailed that the city contributed a portion of impact fees, so for the part of the design. So there's some impact fees tied to that for the Old Kings Road segment as well as the Royal Palms Town Center segment. And the Old Kings Road Special Assessment District is funding a portion of the project. Their agreement with the city entails that those funds would go towards the initial Phase Two A of the project, so their funds are all tied into that portion of the project. So the intent is to take the project design to 100% for all the utility work, because as development occurs, they need to know where utilities are gonna be. The utility line will probably need to go in ahead of the road improvements. And then for 2A and then the Royal Palms Town Center segment, that design will be taken to 100%. And then 2B, we currently have it slated to only take it to 60% and obtain permits and we work with all the landowners on the pond locations and, and modifications that's occurred since this was originally developed back in the day. There's some additional right-of-way easements that need to be obtained and all that will be included in the design fees to, to record and, and obligate all those items. We do have an add-on fee that we may come back to later that could take us to completing the project 200% design if we think there's additional shovel-ready project funding out there, but this time it's only gonna be taken into 60%. So we have a schedule for the project, so today would be to approve the, the design contract and to move forward. Then we would seek DOT approval to give us the go-ahead to proceed with design. We finalize the, the documents and begin in April and then the design would be wrapped up in November of 2026. There's lots of parties and coordination under the highway. We have state with the Lehigh Trail Corridor, we got, we also have air rights with Federal Highway and DOT, we got town center, we got the county. So there's lots of parties involved in this project and a lot of coordination that's gonna need to occur throughout the process. Any, any questions?
Thank you, Carl. Any questions from the dais?
Yeah, I just had a couple, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, go right ahead, councilman.
Thank you. So Carl, I just wanted to address, so we're talking about the linkage, that's part of the scope as well on Town Center linking to Old Kings and kind of that, as you mentioned, kinda choke point there with the bridge from the interstate. And so that both affects stormwater as well as the traffic in that area and then that's going all the way around to where it connects to Royal Palms?
Yeah, the, 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 the initial concept is that Royal Palms will be four-lane from roughly the, the, the bridge that goes over the first canal if you're heading east, eastbound. It'll be four-lane from there directly to Old Kings Road and then Town Center would become a T-intersection with Royal Palms. It could be a roundabout, it could be an intersection, we're gonna do some intersection analysis and, and study as to what's the, the best outcome there. That's part of the first step.
Okay, good. Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that, that portion all the way up to where it connects is part of this because that's also an issue.
We'll be adding turn lanes at Old Kings Road in both directions from Town Center or Royal Palms and then as well as Old Kings Road.
And the design will also take into account growth for Town Center or Royal Palms as it goes underneath the interstate?
Correct, our intent is to, where the canal is now, that'll become a concrete box cover and there'll be two lanes put on top of it.
Okay.
So it'll be two lanes in each direction.
Anyone else?
Thank you, Carl, for the presentation. I don't have any questions, I just, as I understand it, this, obviously, there's a lot of money at $6 million and I know there's a lot involved in this design, there's a lot of components to it, just from the funds alone, we can see that it touches on a lot of different infrastructure needs and things that we have to keep in mind. I just really want to make sure staff keeps a very tight hand on this, particularly from a funding perspective. It, you know, we usually see add-ons in the construction phase, but with a design like this, I could see the contractor coming back and saying, oh, we didn't anticipate this, we didn't anticipate that and we're just adding pennies on top of an already very expensive design contract. So I just want to make sure we're really, really keeping a close eye on this and we're, we're keeping it moving along the way we need to move it along from a time perspective, but also just keeping a very, very close, tight hand on the dollars.
Yes.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else? Yes, councilman?
Carl, I'm, I'm excited that this is, you know, the beginning of starting to address the traffic there at Royal Palms and Town Center, it's just terrible. I mean, quite frankly, I think we need to put stop signs in just to manage the traffic flow, flow right now, but I'm glad that this is being addressed and we're taking a broad approach and, and, you know, taking a permanent fix to this because of that development that's right there, you know, just prior to the canal, so look forward. And, you know, I, I think part of keeping a tight leash on, on, on this project would be, we would appreciate regular updates so we can provide some oversight on that. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Any, anyone else from the dais? So Carl, most of this stuff is funded through this year's budget, but it's gonna bleed over in the next year's budget also, right?
Yes.
Okay, so this is a major project and, and we have to, we have to do something about that road because of that overpass, that is a pinch point, you're right, Councilman Miller. So every, everybody should be aware, this is gonna be an expensive project, but it's gonna bleed over into the next period and probably after that. So this is, the design being completed is November 2026, so we got a ways to go on this one, right?
Yes.
All right, thank you, sir. Do we have to have a motion to approve the?
Yes.
Can I get a motion to approve the resolution?
I'll make the motion to approve it.
I'll second it.
We got a first and second, Ms. Cook, oh, I'm sorry, can we open discussion? We already discussed it, I'm sorry. Open up the public comment, yes? Yes, ma'am. Go right ahead.
Hello. How did, why is the Federal Department of Transportation only contributing 8%? And how do you get the funding from the Federal Department of Transportation? What's the procedure that you do, that you use to, to acquire this funding federally? Why is it only 8%?
Thank you, ma'am. Carl, real quick?
Yeah, this is actually a state appropriation and that's the funding that was allocated for the, this portion of the project. We did ask for construction funding and they didn't fund any of it. To go directly through DOT, we have submitted projects in the past and this particular one, which hasn't been funded yet, it's got lots of competition throughout the TPO and DOT for this size project.
Was this one, was this one, I can't remember, was this one part of our legislative ask this time?
Last year, it was.
I know from, from last year.
Yes, but it's further down in your priority list, it's not top three.
All right, thank you. Yes, Mr. McDonald?
Before we start.
Before we start, could I have the pie chart?
Yes, Carl, can you pull it up, please?
There we go. Okay, I want to talk about the 15% up there from the utility fund. Okay, as a guy who fought the Old Kings Special Assessment District back in 2008, okay, and the whole scam that went on with that, that's where the money in the stealing started from the Water Enterprise Fund, the Water and Sewer Enterprise Fund that we tracked, okay? Many millions of dollars that were loaned out and never paid back, you know, by the city. That's the reason why marionettes used to say, oh, well, the city of Palm Coast has no debt. No kidding. We had a a great cow in the barn that we used to milk. It was called the Utility Enterprise Fund. So here's my point, okay? Having been a developer, there is no reason why we, the current ratepayers, should be paying to redo the water main that's already running up and down Old Kings Road. That's what the 15% is that you've got on there. I would assume that would probably amount to around $800,000, $900,000, something like that. There's no reason why the utility ratepayers should be paying that. The people on that road should be paying that, okay? Because that's their service line. If it needs to get moved, or it needs to create greater service for them, then fine, but there's already a main already there. So we've already been through this rendition, you know, 10, 12 years of yore, and everybody thinks they, that we forgot. I didn't forget, Ray Stevens didn't forget, okay? Because what happened there is, there was about $6 million that got borrowed on that, okay, that Mr. Landon borrowed. By the time you run a calculation on that, and there's a calculation you can use that tells you how much money is worth 20, 30, 10 years later, or whatever, okay? By the time we get that money back, if I remember correctly, when we ran that calculation, we were getting $3.9 million back out of $6 million that we lent out, okay? You know, this is ridiculous. We're repeating history again, so you should not approve this until the 15% gets out of there and it's put back into the people who are going to benefit from it, because none of the ratepayers in Palm Coast are going to benefit from any of that at all, okay? This is absolutely unfair. You've got a problem with the Water and Sewer Fund as it exists now, and we've had it for a number of years. We've tracked millions of dollars, okay? I've been to Tallahassee, you know, and presented things, you know, to a group up there that was supposed to look into it, kind of fell off the cliff, okay? It wasn't a priority. So all I'm saying is, is there's a great opportunity here to stop it right up fund. Let's stop raiding the utility fund for the benefit of a few, you know, property owners that are going to benefit from it. Nobody that's a ratepayer right now is going to benefit from that 15%. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Carl, do you have anything to add to that?
There are some utilities in the roadway, but there, like, there is no water line there. I mean, this is to design and install a water line along that corridor that does not currently exist.
Yes, Mayor and City Council, we do have some pending developments that are waiting for this design so that it can unlock their ability to develop. There's projects that have been previously approved by City Council, but because we do not have design of the road and know where the utilities are, they're in a holding pattern.
But do we have utility impact fees that can pay?
That's what's, that's what's being used to pay for these.
Correct.
So it's impact.
This is utility impact fees, not utility fund?
Correct.
Okay, that's a different, yeah, that should have been clarified on the.
Right. For the new, for any new capacity, added capacity, if there's a relocate of a line as part of the roadway, then that would come out of R and R funds, but it's primarily capacity fees.
And one more thing, Mayor and City Council, currently, the Special Assessment District has paid back $2.6 million, mostly in interest at 5%.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Could you bring your microphone a little closer? We can definitely hear you out here.
Me or you?
Yours, yours, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's a little, little difficult.
Go right ahead.
James D., Section, District 1. First of all, you know, this starts at 20, 2010, 2015?
It's been around a while, sir.
It's been 20 years, 2015.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, it's taken, this is, this is a pain in the neck. It's just as Old King North has been a pain in the neck. It's been a development for years and years and years and years. Now it's looking like it's almost two years before we even get a design, let alone getting it started. And you all have been drive driven down, you know what it's like. When you're coming Old Kings North, Town Center, people are driving on, around on the grass to get around to go north because they can't, because they can't wait for the left-turn traffic. And if you're on, if you're on Town Center trying to turn right on Old Kings, you're there forever, people turning left. It looks like there's a lot of room, and this is probably more complicated than it than it is, but to have wait another two years for a design, but they could put a temporary pull, um, turn-off in both those directions to try to get some kind of traffic moving around there. There's not just plenty of grass and plenty of room there to put some kind of a roadway to get traffic moving, but this is, how long is it going to take after this design? That's what I'm saying. We're going to be, I mean, I'm already pulling my hair out. Look, look, I'm done. So it's going to be a lot more than that. So, you know, we need, this is like one of the projects that really need to be speeded up on along with other things. So, you know, if they can consider, take a look at it again, maybe they can put some temporary drive-arounds on those two intersection to get traffic moving.
Yes, sir, thank you. We all agree that that's a horrible intersection.
And I can add on to that. We are looking at initially upfront to see if we can redesign some of that striping over the bridge and looking at potential ways to improve that intersection in the interim.
Okay.
Early on in our process.
Can you follow up with this as soon as possible, that, Carl? Yes, ma'am?
Could I have the pie chart backup?
Yes, ma'am.
Candy Stevens, I live in the P section. I live over here by all this. Does anybody realize that you're jamming hundreds of homes in this area and then hundreds of homes around the bend and on Point Pleasant? So we're putting thousands more cars right there. For me to go to work now, I have to go a whole different way to go to work now, before we even have the homes built and the roads attached to the roads and all this crap, okay? I don't think it's right to be spending almost 30% of money that we pay in for stormwater funds and for utilities when our water keeps going up, when we can't flush, shower, or dishwash after a hurricane. Let me see here. When I come home every single night, the same time, down Royal Palms, down Point Pleasant, and down Palm Coast Parkway, and smell poop because they're dispelling water every night. So my question is, if this is a new project, why cannot the builder fees go towards some of this? Why is this coming from the people all the time? You guys are nickel-and-diming us to death every single year. Eventually, you're going to squeeze all of us out of here where nobody can afford to live here, and all these developers that are rich are going to have empty homes sitting all over the sea, all over the place. This is what I see coming here. I've sat at these meetings for years with you behind us. Mike, you sat here before you were mayor through months and months of meetings, and Ray, so did you. I'm sorry, I never saw you, and I've never seen you before either. I know where your all's heart lies. Your all's heart lies with the people, and if you all keep taxing us and making us pay for the new development, that is not fair. It is not fair for us to pay for anything new that we don't already need, okay? We didn't need the water plant when I moved here. We didn't need the swales maintained when I moved here as much as they do now, because we had more grass and more trees. Now you've all replaced it all with asphalt and concrete, which is hotter and doesn't absorb any water, and now we're having flooding of our yards, okay? And now you want us to pay for new homes to come in here, to pay for the roads and the infrastructure for the new homes to add more on top of what we already got? Like I told Mayor Alvin, I know you three will take care of what we already got before you add more. I'm not sure about you two. I hope to God that you all can set a precedence and set the tone with these developers coming back time and time again to get what they want like a spoiled brat. When does no mean no these days? No means no. Palm Coast does not run on development. Palm Coast runs on the residents. It's about time everybody realized that.
Thank you, Ms. Stevens. Carl, go back, go back to that, that 15% from utility fund?
Yeah, and, you know, impact fees, the utility funds, those are all developer dollars that's been collected by the city. So the developer is funding this piece of the project.
So those funds that are coming from the utility fund are are impact fees?
Yes.
Do you know, hold it down, do you know the the portion of that that's?
There's three different funds. There's water, wastewater, and utility. However, we're working with the developers, currently developing projects that may be designing part of the water system, so we won't even have to spend our dollars. The developer may be doing that.
Okay.
But either way, it's either capacity fees we already collected or fees that we will be collecting from that developer. So it's it's developer dollars.
And Mayor and City Council, that backup is in on your agenda worksheet where it identifies each capacity fund?
May I, Mayor? Because I do have a specific question with regards to that. So I'm looking at the source of funds list, and I I just, for clarity, well, let me ask you this high level first, because impact fees can't pay 100% of a lot of these projects. Do we know what percentage of this project impact fees by law can pay for?
For transportation and utility, it could be all of it.
Okay, so for transportation and utility, 100% of that cost can be paid for by impact fees?
Yes.
Okay, so then when I look at the source of funds worksheet that is in our agenda packet, I see what you're saying about there being three utility kind of descriptions, but I'm not sure which of these is impact fees, because I see utility capital wastewater, utility capital, well, I actually, it says wastewater collection, I think, and then utility capital just wastewater, and then utility capital water. Which out of those three funds are impact fees?
I'm not 100% sure, and I'd have to double-check that. I think they all are, but I I would have to go back and verify that, unless Helena has that information in the back.
I need that information before I'm able to vote on this, because if 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 the utility, if the impact fees are there, and we know that 100% of that cost can be paid for with impact fees, I agree, I don't know why we would use resident, current resident rates to pay for it.
Until we get, yeah, so a lot of, some of those utility dollars are placeholders as determined, because we don't know how many conflicts we may have. We are going to use capacity fees for everything utility that is new capacity or expanding capacity. If we have to relocate a line, we cannot use capacity dollars, and that's when we'll have to use those R and R funds. So we are going to use as much capacity dollars as we're allowed to by law on the utility system.
Okay, that's why I asked the first question, is what by law can we can we pay, can we use?
Everything that's new capacity. That's increasing capacity.
So what should be all of them?
There may be, as we get into the design, there may be areas where there's existing utilities that we're keeping in place that are going to be in the way of either stormwater or something with the roadway improvement, which requires, if it's not an easement and it's in the right-of-way, R and R funds have to pay for it.
Okay, so.
If it's in the, if it's an easement, that then the roadway funds would have to pay to relocate that utility, and that could be done with the impact fees from roadway.
But how do we break that out for a design? I mean, how, I can understand construction, right? It's easy to see, for construction, we move this here. That's easy. But for design, how do you, how do you apportion that piece?
Those three pots of money are allowances in the design phase, because we don't know how many conflicts we may come to. So as we're getting more subsurface utility exploration work done, and as we identify conflicts, then that's when we are gonna, the designer will work with us on identifying those costs if there is a conflict, and those will come from those allowances that we set aside in the budget.
Okay, so to Councilman Gembaro's point, then, I think as a part of these updates that we will get, we need to see from the contractor, and they're getting paid enough, they should be able to do this, a dichotomy of what can we, what can be legally paid for with the impact fees for this design versus what needs to come from R and R. And we need to be as creative as possible to make sure that impact fees are being paid as much as they can for these items.
Absolutely.
Carl, thank you, Vice Mayor. So of that, of that, say, $6 million, what percentage of it is impact fees?
I think 500 grand is the DOT grant, and then I think it's 700 and something thousand is stormwater funds, which are not impact fees, because that's an existing from our current system, had nothing to do with new homes, and that is part of redesigning bigger conveyance for the stormwater system. So those two items, 1.2 million is not capacity, and there may be a little bit in those utility funds, like I said, it's just a placeholder, so it'd be the rest of those all is impact fees.
Impact fees, okay.
So it's majority, almost the entire project is impact fees, the majority of it.
I think that's the answer we were looking for. Thank you, Carl. Yes, ma'am?
Anna Gibson, I live in the P section. I currently, I previously attended Wateropolis, and that's where I became very concerned about the utility department and the utilities that we currently have at Palm Coast. I think it's inappropriate to take funds from the utility department whenever we're running out of water, right? That's proclaimed, been proclaimed in City Council meetings that we're running out of water. So why are we taking funds from the utility department? It doesn't make any sense. And $6 million, this seems a little outrageous for just a design project. And the contractor that gets the design usually gets the contract billed, let's be honest. So why isn't that being farmed out? I don't understand why there isn't a more appropriate process for a request for price. Contractors would eat at their hand to beat this price. Why aren't you letting them do it?
Thank you, ma'am. Carl, this was put out the bid, right?
Excuse me?
This was put out to bid, right?
No.
Yeah, this, we did an RFQ, it's filed CCNA, so you select the design consultant. They don't construct the project, they're only designing it. So they're based on Florida Statute, you know, Consulting Commended Negotiation Act. They were the top-ranked firm. We spent a long time negotiating the fee and resolving the scope of work to make sure we had it very well spelled out in terms of what those dollars were and what we were getting. There is, it's a very complicated project when you're dealing with a bridge structure under the highway and under, there's a lot of structural analysis, a lot of coordination and and work with DOT and Federal Highway that is, it's costly and takes a long time.
Yes, sir, I understand that. That, anybody that's traveled that road should see how how cumbersome it is and all that's going on there. You got the roads, you got the water, you got the bridge, all that.
Conservation, too.
Conservation, and you also have the connect, the large canal there. Yes, ma'am, go right ahead.
Okay. Celia Puglisi, first of all, I have a question. On this planned project, are they going to widen the underpass over 95 on Town Center Boulevard?
That would be the hope, but it's unlikely, but we are going to work that alternative with DOT. We've already asked them. It's currently not on their program to widen.
That's even a.
This is, this is useless.
Celia, that's even, that's even a larger prospect.
I understand, Mayor, but this is useless. All these, all this project, and the $6 million we're wasting, and you want to use our rates for the utility that we pay for this? This is useless. The first thing you need to do if you want to improve Old Kings Road South into 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 this Town Center, you need to widen that little narrow thing that will go under 95.
Oh, yeah.
If you don't widen that, this is useless money on the garbage.
This is going to widen that roadway.
Sir, I, excuse me. I don't trust our administrators. Sorry, sir. I've been here since 95, and I am enduring what the city endures on our residents. I'm sorry, Mr. Gotti or whoever back there. Most of them, I don't trust them, because they don't work for the residents. They work for a special interest, and they tell you what the special interests want, not what we need. Here, they work for what others and or themselves want, not for what we need, the residents. Sir, don't do this project. First thing you need to get the federal government, which runs I-95, right, to make widen that thing. If you don't widen that, there is no use. We all get stopped in the thing under 95 when we come here. This is no use. Do not approve this. It's not the time. You need to go first on Old Kings Road North, and they don't have that issue with the narrowing under 95, you know? This should wait. First, the the federal government, which runs 95, is the district, needs to widen that. Otherwise, we're doing all these things for Town Center, and you know what? It's not being resolved, the traffic. The traffic is going to be a mess anyway. Every one, every time I want to come here from Old Kings Road from my house, it is a bottleneck. You know my neck? This is what it is. Sir, don't do this. Do we have bids really for $6 million for CPH? Do we really have bids? Do we really have bids? You need to look at, and I know you don't want to micromanage because it's under the law, but we need to see what is being done. No to our utilities to be used for this. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
Think about the bottleneck. Think what I'm telling you. This project is useless. Think, you know, Mr. Watson in 1911 said to his employees, "Think. We need to think. Don't do this project unless I-95 and the feds come and widen that underpass." That's the only thing I can.
Thank you, Celia. Yes, ma'am?
I can clarify that. This whole project is widening Old Kings from two lanes to four lanes, and it's widening the road under 95 from two lanes to four lanes. Yes, ideally, if federal highway widened the bridge, we wouldn't have to build concrete box culverts for a stormwater system when we could run that in an open canal north of the four-lane roadway. However, we could put box culverts under the roadway. So the roadway design is widening it to a four-lane system and addressing the two main intersections of Royal Palm and Town Center and Town Center and Old Kings Road.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am?
Hello, Darlene Shelley, Hidden Lakes in Palm Coast. I have a lot of knowledge of this, having a home in Hidden Lakes. I've been before the previous board many, many times, trying to prevent noncompliant and inconsistent projects from getting approved on Old Kings Road that the previous mayor and board approved anyway, even though we felt we had a strong legal argument that four-story apartment complexes are not compliant with luxury, single-family homes as such in Tuscana. But it was approved anyway with zero frontage, no buffers at all from Old Kings Road. These apartment complexes were allowed, including land annexations from the city to the developer to allow for a bigger footprint on environmentally sensitive land on apparently a road that has no infrastructure. Part of that deal was they were given free grants or money or however it works upfront for any required infrastructure, and they were going to be credited back on the backend from the city. That, to me, is disgusting, because now I see that you want us to pay for it. And there are billions of dollars in FDOT grants that the county and the city sit by and watch Flagler Airport take from the residents of Palm Coast. They take these millions of dollars to build fancy lounges for pilots. And I have nothing against aviation, I'm a big aviation fan, but this money should be going to infrastructure to help the residents of Palm Coast and Flagler County, not to fat cats who like to fly into Flagler Airport. It's robbing us of money that could be helping our infrastructure situation. How can you justify allowing these projects to come onto Old Kings Road and add to the traffic and add to our struggling infrastructure, water and sewer, without having the proper measures in place? And you have coming up on the agenda an increase to utility rates that you expect hard-working citizens, retirees, blue-collar workers to pay for? In my opinion, it's criminal. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Okay, again, my name is Rafael Yeras.
Yes, sir.
In Palm Coast. I'm going to give out you an idea that's going to blow your brains out, okay? And this is very serious. I'm in the Navy, okay? I'm an aircraft carrier. With all this infrastructure, with all these buildings, I have a background in real estate, background in construction, the whole nine yards, okay? So I'm not just talking nonsense. If you, and I did say this before to the previous administration, but nobody plays mind, we have all these buildings coming in, okay? Where's the water coming from? The aquifer? No, you can get a plant, listen to what I'm telling you now, you get a plant two miles, three miles offshore. Ah, you capisce? Okay? Two or three miles offshore, the plant is going to cost you zero because you can send water to all the communities and you don't have to raise the rate of the water. Very simple, very simple. If you fail the plan, your plant will fail. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Hi there, Gina Weiss.
Yes, ma'am.
If you can, please, could you put that pie figure up there? Okay. What is the, you said 500,000 for FDOT grant, and then you have utility funds, so how much is that?
Utility funds, I think it was right around 900,000, and I did get, around 900,000, I did get clarification, 300,000, well, a third of it is for new capacity for the water line.
Okay.
And the other two funds.
Let's not have a discussion with him, Ms. Weiss.
Well, I'm kind of.
This is, well, 900, 500,000 from that, okay. 6.5 million for a corporate playhouse for the airport for Roy Seeger. There's something wrong with this picture. Here's the guy's name, Joe Jerkins. He's the one that signs all of the grants for the FDOT, okay? Doesn't even want to show up at the county meeting tomorrow, I wonder why. And I'll just leave you his name and telephone number. Maybe you could give him a telephone call, because I've been in touch with him about our feeling infrastructure. It's absolutely a disgrace.
Ms. Weiss?
People absolutely getting killed on the roads.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir?
Mark Stansel. Year ago, Lady from Hidden Lakes, I was involved in that. I've spent time out there at Hidden Lakes with a couple of meetings with them. Because of the 29 acres that they were going to put these apartments right on the edge of Old Kings Road, which is actually a scenic byway, by the way, as is. And the thing is, the property there was zoned office space. And they, Mr., I believe Douglas purchased the property, and then Clint Smith on the planning board zoned it for multifamily for his buddy, and Mayor Alvin stamped it. That's a little corruption there. So, call it, you know, like it is. But, you know, the traffic increase there is, and it's going to be so bad with, because they're talking about seven, four-story buildings on that 29 acres, you know, right there on the edge of Old Kings Road. So there's, there's issues here that we need to look at. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir?
Mark Webb, Palm Coast?
Yes, sir.
You got your wish, you got a room full of people that'll be here for the entire meeting. I have a question about that, if you pull up that pie chart a minute. I'm confused. Did we present this to the new builders as a need for them to assist us before we approved all those new homes, Royal Palms and those areas that were put in? What is the first thing a builder does when he clears the property? He puts roads and utilities in. I'm hearing, I've only been here five years, but I've drove through that intersection. It has been a problem for 10-plus years. And yet we approved an additional number of cars to go through that area and did not take a breath, I believe, maybe somebody could answer this question, to present to the builders, by the way, this is the impact of we approving you? We're going to need another $15 million to offset this to benefit you and us. Do you still want to build here?
Yes.
You know, other parts of the country do it that way. They look at the big picture and they approve it so that we don't have to come to our city people and go, we need money to fix a problem we know we've always had, but it's going to be magnified 10 times. And finally, I'll ask this question. FDOT grant, you have that money now?
Yeah, I believe we've already executed the grant.
What happened to grants and funds and loans last weekend, Counselor?
Excuse me, sir?
Mayor, I believe all those have been frozen and are not going to be available to us.
I don't see that.
I would be willing to bet you that.
All right, thank you, sir. Any more public comments relating this? No one come forward, I'll, I'll close public discussion. Anything from the dais?
I, I think we could benefit from some more transparency with regards to what portion of this illustrious pie chart is actually impact fees, because it is unclear. I mean, you have, and this was my question, I had written on my notes, what utility funds, what portion of that is impact fees? Now, it may be tough to ascertain exactly what that looks like yet, because we, I think a lot of that information would come from the consultant, but maybe we need to get with the consultant and see. Because I agree, and I've been a very staunch advocate of this, our residents should not pay for growth. Future growth should pay for itself. So to the extent we can maximize that in this project, we need to make sure we're doing that, and I think our taxpayers deserve to know exactly what portion of this specifically is guaranteed, and I know that's a strong word, but is very likely to pay for a lot of this project. Now, I honestly cannot say that the widening of Old Kings Road and Royal Palms is only, it's not only going to benefit future residents, it's going to benefit everybody that's here, but, but we have an influx of people that have caused more traffic, right? So it's kind of, it's cyclical, it's connected. But I do think that right now it's unclear what our plan is. I don't, are we on any time constraint?
I do have, I did get clarification from our finance director. So 10% of the utility funds, so 10% of the budget could, is a placeholder for potential utility conflicts with reclaimed water and force main. We may not use any of it if we are able to design around existing utilities and not have to relocate anything. So at most, it would be 10% of, would be not developer-funded project. Stormwater, all of that is coming from stormwater fees, so that 14%. So 24% is not coming from developer dollars, plus the 8% grant. So that's 24, 32% of the project is either a grant, stormwater rate, or coming, potentially from the R and R funding utility if necessary. The rest of the project is all from developer contributions that have already been collected.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you.
Councilman Miller?
Yes, Mayor, I just want to echo the Vice Mayor's thoughts on maybe having that presented in a better way so that we can all see that, especially the residents, because it's, it is a huge issue that, you know, where this funding is coming from, and so potentially in any future presentations, we should have that as well, so it's easily kind of broken out. I know in some of the capital improvement projects that you went over with us a couple months back, we had that all broken out, kind of where all that funding's coming from, and so that, I think that would help people kind of understand where that money's coming from and have a better idea of how much is coming from, you know, the, the general fund, so to speak, versus impact fees.
Understood. Thank you, Councilman Miller. Anyone else? Okay, back to me, I guess. I know what everyone's feeling. I do. I sat out there, I've, I've seen the growth, but we have, we have to work to improve what we have. The gentleman mentioned FDOT grant being shut off. FDOT grant has nothing to do with the federal government, that is state funds. So if, well, let me finish this. One thing I would like to say is, we are a new council and we're moving through, and we're trying, we're trying to fix all these problems. But you have to understand, I, I agree with most of you. Impact fees have not kept up with the rate of growth. I, I wholeheartedly agree with you on that. I stood in opposition when they raised the, the water utility rate back in November of 2023 was when it first came up. No, March of '24, they raised, they raised the impact fees. Only one person voted against that impact fee on, on that council, and it was a guy sitting in this chair. So I understand your pain, and, but, and we're going to work through it. You just have to get, this is something I looked up the other day, because it's something else that's going to come up on the agenda someday down the way. Says grace, it says grace is the opposite of karma, which is all about getting what you deserve. Grace is getting what you don't deserve. Let's talk about grace. Have a little grace and understand our perspective and where we're coming from. We are, everybody up here is a leader. Everybody, we didn't run because we're not leaders. We ran because we are leaders and we're trying to do the right thing for this city. So have, give us a little grace and let us work through it. With that being said, if, if, who, who made the motion to approve?
I don't think we have a motion yet, do we?
Who made the motion to approve?
It looks like the motion was from Councilmember Miller and a second from Councilmember Gembaro.
Okay, Councilman Miller, if you would like to rescind your motion, which he can do, right? He can rescind his motion. We can queue this up against, again, Carl, and bring it back to us and show us the breakdown of where the money's actually coming from and the sources of it. And we're going to have to pay some of it, not all the impact fees, but I want to cut down on it, because I feel, I, I feel it. I know what's going on. So if you would like to rescind your motion, Councilman, we'll do that, and we'll bring it back, City Manager. We're not on a time crunch with this. We don't need this done like today, right?
So Mr. Mayor, just a point of clarification, I thought Carl did clear that up. Was I, am I incorrect hearing that? I thought he did give a more breaker, breakdown?
What I would, what I would like to see in the future is a more clear picture of what impact fees are paying versus what enterprise fees are paying. But for this project specifically, yes, I am satisfied largely that your, your statement that 32% is not paid by impact fees, or I think you said up to 32% would not be paid by impact fees. But I want to see, as we go through the progress of this project, what has been ascertained between you all and the consultant as to what actually could be paid by impact fees? Because it's my understanding that as the consultant gets into this, that could change. Councilman Gembaro asked for status updates. In those status updates, I want to see what we've, what we've ascertained as far as what can be funded from what funds. So as it stands, yes, I'm satisfied. I want to see more clarity in the future for not only this project, but also future projects.
Okay, thank you, Vice Mayor. Bless you. You okay, Leslie? Okay, we will go, we will go with the main motion, call the roll or call the vote?
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gembaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay, thank you, ma'am. We're going to move on to the consent items. Anyone have any discussion of the consent, consent items as presented? Yes, Councilman?
Okay, so, so I've got, you got me? Okay, you guys can hear me. I've, I've got just two comments of two of the items. The first one, just want to say thank you to my fellow council members for, for working through in such a professional way. The, the staffing and the consensus on moving forward with our, enhancing our safe haven, which is our fire department and the baby box. And in particular, I wanted to thank Patrick Giuliano, Chief Barry Hill, Mr. Perzek in the back, Brian, the guys from the Knights of Columbus, for their leadership. And there's, there's a recent article that was published about the baby box situation in Palacca, where the mother gave up their, their daughter, and the firefighter, him and their spouse, they couldn't, they were looking to adopt, and they adopted that baby. And now, now it's, it's a great news story, we're, we're helping, you know, the youngest members of our community. So I want to thank everybody for their leadership on this. I think it's important for our community. The second item that I just wanted to thank the council again, and in particular Marcus Duffy, Jeremiah Blocker, my good friend, and Jacksonville City Council member Rory Diamond, for their support and leadership, for supporting our city employees that also serve our community and our nation in a military uniform. We, we're, we're leveling things out, and I think it's the right thing to do, and I really appreciate everybody's support on, on these two items.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the dais?
There's just one, Mayor. Item number eight, I know I had, I had expressed a little frustration previously about item number eight. It is with regards to the Florida Power and Light Agreement. They're, they're basically telling us that we have to pay this deposit of $229,792, enabling FPL to commence a design and estimating process, but essentially, I mean, it's very fluid with regards to what they could end up paying, or what we could end up paying them and what this estimate could end up costing. I'm just going to express from the dais again, as FPL should be a stakeholder in this community and work in concert with the city, that they try to keep that as close to $229,792 as possible, keeping in mind that we have to work in partnership with them for the benefit of our residents every day. And their failure to provide us a firm price on certain things is very frustrating for me. So I would just, again, like to express that as somebody who's in our community and working with our city and our residents every day, that they try to keep that in mind as they move forward with this.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Carl, do you get, you get that? You're working with them on that? All right, thank you, sir. Is that it? Consent to, we have a motion to approve?
Mr. Mayor, I move approval of the consent agenda.
There you go, thank you, sir.
Second.
Councilman Miller seconded. Do we have to open this up for public comment? Any public comment on this, on these consent? Any public comment on this, on these consent items? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Stevens?
This is Celia Puglisi, Palm Coast is 91. Okay, I have a question with the item eight. Resolution approval of a Florida Power and Light deposit for services for the relocation of transmission poles for the Old Kings Road North widening Phase Two. Who's paying what? Here, because you know, if it's for the transmission poles by FPL, it's, that means that the city, we are paying something for this relocation of the FPL power poles, as is read there?
Carl's ready to come up and answer your questions, Celia.
I might be able to.
I might be able to help. I have a question now, so everybody knows, not just me.
No, no, I'm saying, he's coming up to speak on the mic, but go ahead, City Manager.
Ms. Puglisi, this is part of the Old Kings Road North widening project that we received $18.3 million from Florida Department of Transportation, Florida Department of Transportation for a legislative priority grant back in 2023. We looked at the easements and deeds and we went all the way back to the 1950s to figure out whose responsibility it was to move these poles. And by attorneys going back and forth, it is the city's burden to move the poles so that we can widen the road. So this is FPL charging us a deposit to look at the design of relocating that pole.
And how much is the deposit and the total amount?
The total amount is 1.297 million dollars and the deposit is 229,000.
Now, my question is this. We are not widening North Old Kings Road, but guess, I hope they don't approve it, but they're working on South Old Kings Road.
We're doing both simultaneously. We have two different projects, but yes, we are going to work on widening Old Kings Road North from the Bollin Alley to around Frontier, Frontier.
Yeah, but that was postponed because of this, for how long?
No, ma'am, that's still, that's still moving along. We're still working on that.
And just for the, for the public's edification as well, this is coming from transportation impact fees.
Okay, all right, okay.
Good, Ms. Celia, you good? All right, thank you, ma'am. Any more public comments? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring it back to the dais. Call the vote, please. Are we voting? Call the vote.
Can I say something about Royal Palm? That Royal Palm to Town Center, my name is Regina Bernier, I reside in Palm Coast. I find out that Royal Palm from Bel Air to Town Center to Old Kings Road is a disaster in the making because of all these, all these apartments that are going to be built. Who created that disaster? Can anybody answer me that?
Sir, please.
Pardon me? I don't.
Athletes, please. Yes, ma'am, finish your comment.
A woman died there.
Yes, ma'am.
Had a heart attack and died because she could not deal with the stress of the road. And when we come home at night at four o'clock, it's bumper to bumper coming back to Bel Air. I don't want to drive to Bel Air, I live in the R section. It's a nightmare for the seniors of Palm Coast. Thank you very much.
Yes, ma'am, thank you. And, and that's what I was discussing earlier. We didn't create these problems, we are trying to fix them, okay? With that being said, I'll bring it back to the dais. Call the vote, please.
Vice Mayor Pontieri?
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro?
Yes.
Councilmember Miller?
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens?
Yes.
Mayor Norris?
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, ma'am. We're going to move on to item J, public participation. Yes, sir.
Yes, sir. My name is Brian Butka.
Pause for just a second, sir. I'd like to also thank the Knights of Columbus for the, the baby boxes. That's a great, a great program and I'm glad you guys are doing it. I'm sorry, sir, go right ahead.
No, no, no problem.
You have your full three minutes.
Yes, sir. Brian Butka, good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. I'd appreciate the opportunity to speak before you today regarding what I believe is a serious issue affecting the residents of budding the Cascades development along Seminole Woods Parkway. The Cascades development is required to have a 20-foot landscape buffer. This buffer is not just an aesthetic feature, it serves as a protective buffer between new developments and surrounding residential areas. The buffer is needed to mitigate the noise and dust from the construction that the residents have been subjected to for months. The absence of this buffer has forced nearby residents to breathe the construction dust and to be exposed to unacceptable levels of noise, disrupting family life and diminishing the quality of our lives. In Palm Coast Municipal Code, Seminole Woods Parkway is classified as a specially designated roadway and as such, the landscape buffer requirements for this area are classified as the most restrictive type G. The Land Development Code, Section 11.03.05 explicitly states, "At least 50% of the existing native vegetation shall be preserved within the landscape buffer area. Preserved native vegetation within the buffer shall be hand-cleared of vines, debris, and dead branches to present an attractive transition from maintained to natural." The actions taken by the developer, completely clearing the landscape, are a direct violation of this ordinance. This result has been a complete failure to protect the community from the ongoing noise and dust, which the buffer was intended to alleviate. Palm Coast residents and small businesses, who are not in compliance with city ordinances, have been issued stop work orders and orders to begin remediation efforts at their own expense. The same standards must apply to the developers. I formally request that the city of Palm Coast enforce the landscape buffer requirements as outlined in our own municipal code, require the developer to restore the landscape buffer to compliance, including the restoration of the native vegetation that was originally mandated, and issue a stop work order for the Cascades development and two appropriate landscape buffer remediation steps have been implemented to protect the residents from the noise and the dust. The health and well-being of residents must be prioritized over unchecked development. I urge the city council to act swiftly to hold this developer accountable and ensure that Palm Coast ordinances apply equally to all. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
James D. W. Section, some of this is old. We covered earlier, but I'm going to go over it anyway. You know, we have a new council. Old issues are unresolved and it's my job to remind you with grace about what we need to cover. No problem. You all around for office with promise of helping us and listening and it seems like you're off to a good start. And thank you, Ms. Teresa, for standing up with us in the past years, who's been behind us quite a bit. Of course, of all, we all realize we need to stop building houses and multifamily housing. Single-family homes and existing vacant lots, one at a time, is mostly acceptable, but tearing out these farce for large developments with overpriced inferior homes and multifamily homes is just too much. And why is not the planning and zoning board restricting some of this? I thought we got on them and told them stop, stop approving some of these things. That's more because of this causing our roads to be overcrowded. We already talked about some of this, you know, widening and turnoff lanes are needed. Know you're addressing turnoff lanes down on Bel Air, which is great, but thank you for doing that. Hope we get that done soon. But even along Pine Lakes Parkway needs a lot of turnoff lanes. They were pretty quick to add a turnoff lane going into the KB Homes development. And in a year, I've only seen one car turn into those lanes to go into the development. Meanwhile, streets like World Way, Wellington, Woodhaven, Wellwood, even Commerce Drive desperately need turnoff lanes. And even Palm Coast Parkway, if we're trying to turn left onto Pine Lakes, it, that gets all backed up. And even people driving under grass and causing a pothole in there. So that needs to be addressed and the street department has done nothing about it in a year and a half. I've been talking about it. So again, yes, we do need to get our infrastructure in order before we consider more homes. The Western expansion, you and I talked about that a little bit before the election. You know, we need industrial, commercial, retail buildings out there, gas station, convenience store, along Route One, small businesses, restaurants, even medical offices. That would keep, help keep traffic away from the congested parts of towns and be more convenient for the residents west of Bel Air. And we also talked about swales before the election. There's 1,200 miles of swales, 41 miles are getting done a year. It's going to take about 30 years to get done. What's the possibility still of, is it still in your notes to get a Chira contractor to get that done and blitz through it sooner? Because I believe Jeremy, he's not here, he has all the figures, how much per house, per month, per year, how many millions of dollars are in that account for, for the swales? And it should be enough to cover getting a, just a heavy blitz going through and taking care of all that. And then finally, State, Road 100, it's a state project, I know, but can we speed them up? A big problem I have is going east on 100, trying to turn right onto Old Kings. That right turn lane is blocked off for nine months. And even on a Sunday, you can't turn there and you can't make any progress trying to cut through the Winn-Dixie parking lot because of obstructions and layout. So if you can lean on them a little bit, that would be great.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am, Ms. Lisa Perkins.
Yeah, okay, thank you. Good evening, everyone. It's a breath of fresh air, you guys. It's totally different than previous city councils. You all were elected to serve the residents of this city and that comes with the expectation that you will be responsible stewards of our money. All of you right now are serving your first terms, your very first term. And so we don't blame you for the past mismanagement of this city, but we do expect diligence, transparency, most importantly, and a commitment to securing the best deals for the prosperity of everyone in this city. Before considering any rate hikes, though, you need to ensure that city operations and finances are in order. And I would imagine being first time, taking over from previous group, you guys would want to make sure everything is clean. And I would start with the utility enterprise and have a full forensic audit. You guys need to do that from A to Z. Something's been going on there, something may still be going on there, but you really guys need to investigate that and see what has happened and see how to rectify it. So I would say no rate hikes, fee increases, or new taxes should even be considered until you have a full audit, a full forensic audit and beginning with them. Also, the residents, we're, as residents, we are tired of the city continually reaching into our pockets instead of finding alternative revenue resources. This has been brought up before, I've come up here, many other people have come up here. And right now, let's take advantage with this ripe time in our country. They're going to be bringing manufacturing back to America. Let's take advantage. We have a railroad spur out there. Start attracting businesses to Palm Coast, manufacturers. You guys are bringing in more residents? We need jobs. Let's get on, let's get revenue from the backs of the companies, you know, and more taxpaying residents, not, and you know, people just being, coming into our city and doing things, not on our utility rates. That's ridiculous to keep doing that with us. And I do agree, we as a community, we do need to invest in our infrastructure, you know, as new people come in. We do have to pay part of that, but not in our utility rates. That's ridiculous. Again, find other revenue resources, attract other businesses, if anything. With that, I just want to say, I hope you guys realize November 5th was a mandate, no more business as usual, okay? So no more special interests and no, you work for us, not out, not special interests and not outside developers. So good luck, you guys. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
How are you guys doing this evening?
Uh, sir, state your name for the record.
Oh, Corey Price. B section, sorry.
Yes, sir.
So just welcome everybody that, you know, like you'd mentioned, that a few people are serving their first terms. Well, this is the first for me coming up here speaking for the first time. I had a couple of things I wanted to talk about. One of the things, this has been a bird on the saddle for, our saddle for years now is the commercial vehicle ban. I am a electrician employed by an electrical company. I have a electrical van that I drive every day. And I, my wife and I had bought our house back in 2021. March 31st, we closed on it. Lived there for a year and a half without any problems. Nobody bothered us. And of course, our vehicles are on the better looking side and not an eyesore. Apparently, we ran into, I don't know if it was the city or there was somebody that had mentioned some, mentioned to the city of our vehicle, started complaining about it. And so we had to get a cover for it, to cover it up. So I remember, I heard you make a comment about Palm Coast is not an HOA. It's not a, it's not an HOA, it's not a retirement community anymore. There's a lot of working class people that come here, there's a lot of people that have to work for a living. And one thing I want to say about this commercial vehicle ban, maybe this was a retirement community at one point in time, but it's not a retirement community anymore, like you'd said yourself, sir. I'd like to see a change in this. I think it's, I think it's kind of a, kind of a slap in the face to working people like myself that have to either be reduced to either covering their vehicles at night or we have to park it in a storage facility. And it's also an added expense, added expense for a lot of people that have to work like myself. The other thing too is, in regards to the covers, first of all, they look more like an eyesore. A lot of cases, it's more of an eyesore to have a cover on a vehicle than it is to just have the vehicle as is. Granted, it's kept in decent looking shape on the outside. But I've had a situation where I've had to, I have to climb on the top of my vehicle to put my cover on. And my question to the city of Palm Coast is if I fall, if I were to have to keep doing this and I fall off my vehicle and get injured, is the city of Palm Coast going to pay my medical expenses? Are you guys going to pay for the time off that I would have to take if I get injured from having to comply with something that I shouldn't really have to comply with, in my opinion? And, oh, man, that time goes by fast. That's all I wanted to say about that, just some, something I'm hoping we'll visit. And also, it'd be nice to see a sidewalk on Bird of Paradise Drive as well, from Lake View all the way to Matanzas Woods Parkway as well, as that is a very, even with the low speed limit of 30 miles an hour, that is a very dangerous spot for people to walk. I'd like to see something looked at, to have that done as well.
All right, thank you, sir.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it.
Yes, sir.
Nathan Phelps, Palm Coast District 4.
Hey, Nathan, I hadn't seen you in a long time.
It has been a while. Congratulations on your win. Congratulations, Vice Mayor. Last time, here's Councilwoman, and now most tenured member. I said something a year ago, I want to say again. Happy Chiefs Week, everybody. Once again, three in a row, we're going to do it. I do have a question. What is, Mr. Mayor, what's the difference between in-laws and outlaws? Outlaws are wanted. So, so something I've noticed, and you know me for it at this point, took someone a second. My mother-in-law does not like that. She lives with me, don't tell her I said that. But it's, as I've noticed on Facebook lately, a lot of people are worried about what is the current egg shortage that a lot of people are experiencing. They're going to Publix scrambling to find eggs and they're seeing that there's not a single one in the entire store. And that's something that we're all suffering. And two years ago, some friends and I started an effort to try to get chickens legalized in the city. And if Vice Mayor Pontieri was our loudest champion in that and supported us in that when we tried to get a pilot program going. And Mr. Mayor, you also defended us in that as well when that program was shot down. But it's turning to look like that would have been a good idea for this city and across the nation, if people were able to have just a few in their own backyard. And one of our biggest concerns when we brought that up was supply chain. Some people think it's just something silly or something because we're from the woods. I've never lived in the woods, but for some of us, it was pets. My daughter still wants them, it would be great if we could get those. And others, it is just the scarcity that comes when, like the bird flu has come through and takes out 100 million chickens at a time across the city, I mean, across the country, eggs plummet. And that in itself would be something that people would be afraid of because you'd think bird flu, if I have birds, I get sick. But the issue, the, what I pointed out two years ago in the summer was that the bird flu is not something very contagious to people. Since 2002, there have only been roughly 1,000 bird-to-human transmission cases and I don't think any human-to-human transmission cases. So that, what we suffer from when something happens that we don't have our own supply chain, we were just left without. The risk of being sick isn't something that comes to people, but not having it or having to pay too much, and we're all already suffering with the cost of everything going up in the last four years. This is something that we could decentralize and people could have. And so I'd like to bring back up that issue of, personally, I would like to have the same code that we created with code enforcement to become law and not just a pilot program. But I do think that it's something that would serve all people in the city. This isn't a family thing, even though lots of young families have told me they want this, but it's an everybody thing because even senior citizens would like to have a few chickens of their own if we can guarantee that it's not an issue to our neighbors and we want to be considerate. But I do think that that's something that should be revisited. And since this is a very town-friendly council, as opposed to last one, I would like to work on that with you to get that going again.
Okay, thank you, sir. Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Does everyone know that, I heard on the news today that Waffle House is starting to charge a 50-cent surcharge per egg? I just heard that today. Yes, sir?
Mark Stansfield. I want to concur with the lady that spoke earlier about the speed limits. I live off Smith Trail on a court, and the speed limit's 30 miles an hour, and there's kids, it's a narrow road, people walking their dogs, and people fly down there. It's a hazard, it needs to be lowered. And on Seminole Woods, where it's four lanes and it comes into two, right there at the North Sesame, they need to reduce that to 45 from 55. We might not have had a firefighter hit just recently, the speed was lower. Maybe they wouldn't, wouldn't be on their phone or whatever their problem was. But that intersection is dangerous for many things. I understand the accident was somebody on a motorized scooter got hit by a car, or they collided. And the problem is, you can't hardly see, and people pull forward, they don't stop at the stop sign. And they ain't got a bad habit of pulling forward into that crosswalk. And somebody's come flying across there at 25 miles an hour on a motorized vehicle, which, there's a sign that says no motorized vehicles on the sidewalk. You know, and it's dangerous for walkers and bicyclists. Now, I ride my bike 60 miles a week throughout Palm Coast, and I've been almost hit twice by people pulling forward and not honoring people in the sidewalk. Now, one thing, my, on heavy intersections where that happens, like at Sesame and Seminole Woods, maybe put a stop sign for pedestrians. Or like up on Colbert, they've got a button you push and it starts flashing lights for people to cross. That might be something to look into for these high-traffic areas that, you know, accidents can happen, you know? And pay attention to these motorized vehicles that probably shouldn't be on there, but, you know, the police don't look for that. But one last thing I'd like to mention is, is, uh, this is not a bedroom community anymore, this is a full-blown city, and we're growing. And we need to treat it that way. And I want to say one thing, I think the code enforcement needs to be reformed to fit our community now. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir. You need counsel, Dennis McDonald. I want to talk to you more about the water company and bring you back on a little past history. Over 12 years ago, I had a conversation with a woman at the Florida Public Utilities Department. You're not governed by that here because you own the water company, okay? I was doing some research on what was going on with the water company here, because originally, it was Florida Water that owned it, and then the city bought it. And so, I complained to her about what was going on, and she said to me, "Mr. McDonald, you have five choices." I said, "Great, I got a pen, I'm ready to write them down." She says, "They're your council members. They're ultimately responsible for what happens with the water company in your city, in every city in Florida, we have no control over it, okay? The Public Utilities Commission only regulates for-profit water companies." So, what's going on here, you need to pay real good attention to what's going on, because what she's saying here is Florida law says the council is responsible. You're responsible for what the staff does here. And my point here is very simply this, I asked, and I sent all of you the email, okay, and the response. I asked for you to quantify all the wells and the property, the real estate property that they were on. The response that I got was that they couldn't do that. As a matter of fact, so that we can read it into the record, I will read you exactly what the response says. It's not very long. It says, "The city does not have a record with the details requested. They can't tell me about the wells, okay, what they own. However, the staff has shared that most of our current wells are on city-owned property. A smaller number may be on property that have easement rights, and the majority of future wells do not have current land rights. The question here is, are you operating a burning-made-off water company, okay? You don't know, they don't know what they have for product. I did three water companies and took them to the Public Utilities Commission and got them approved in another state, okay? I know what it takes. You guys are not even walking on thin ice, okay? You're out there giving permits in this town for water that you don't have. Okay, absolutely don't have it, and you can't prove it. This council can't prove to me, okay, that you have the water that you're giving out. So, here's what I'm saying to all of you, we're all new, we all worked real hard to get you here. We wanted a change from the clowns that were here before, okay, and we got it. And so, what we're asking for you is to look into this. You don't have the water, stop the development, because I'm giving you a 10-day notice here now, okay, to give me that list. If you don't give me that list, I'm going to move to make a complaint on a federal level, okay? Because you guys have taken bonds based on those assets. So, it rests with the council, I'm sorry to tell you all that, thank you.
Thank you. Sir, yes, sir.
I don't know how to follow all that.
Very cautious.
All right, so my name's Eddie Lang, I'm in the R section. Two things, I just, one, I want to thank the council, all the people that came to our opening of Vincent's Clubhouse. We really appreciate the city backing us and being behind something that the community really needs. We had a great turnout from the community. So again, thank you for coming to our grand opening of Vincent's Clubhouse. I have a colleague that I work with, and he lives in the E section, and he's dealing with light pollution. So, they put the new streetlights up on East Hampton. He, there is a streetlight that literally shines right in his bedroom. He called FPL, they said that they have a, I guess, a shade where you can put the light down. When he reached back out to FPL, they're saying that Barbara Grossman denied it. So, I don't understand why he has to live with that, because, and I have, I have a couple of pictures that I can just kind of show you, you know, walk up there and show you, but, I mean, it makes it, I mean, this is a backyard, this is the streetlight, I mean, he's lighting up the backyard completely. It goes right into his daughter's bedroom. I mean, she doesn't have to turn a light on to wake up in the middle of the night, because it's bright. The bathroom's bright, I mean, he could save electric, but he doesn't want the light to just be shining. And I don't understand why it would have been denied just to put one of those little shade things, because the light should be going down anyway, it shouldn't be shining in the world. So, I don't know, maybe city manager can take a look and find out why Ms. Grossman denied it, and we can move forward, but I just don't understand why the light is shining into the, I mean, we all want streetlights and they're great, but they should be going down toward the street.
Yes, sir, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Could you send, could you send us an email on that and follow up? And we'll talk to code enforcement, that's an easy one, I hope. Not everything's easy. Yes, Mr. Stone, how can I help you?
Bruce Stone, Seminole Woods. I got one question, I want to make a statement, and hopefully, someone can answer it. On Seminole Boulevard, coming from 100, there's a lane with an arrow to make the turn on the first Seminole Boulevard. On the second, you go further down, there's no lane turn. And if you're coming from meter directions, as you well know, one of the fire volunteers got hurt. It's murder to make a turn. Does anyone know why there wasn't a second lane for a turn? The first one has it, the second doesn't.
Yep, we'll check on it, Bruce.
Yeah, and the second thing is, I've been living in this city for 13 years. I'm not in love with it, I don't think it'll be my final return to me. Although these residents, other than Teresa, she's an old timer, they have to give you guys a break. There's been so much corruption for the last 12, 13 years I've been here. A lot of people that sat on this city council should have been going to jail. I was the greatest thing in living in New York, the mob controlled everything. And Ray, I just read you came from the Bronx, so, yeah, you know what I'm talking about. The mob controlled everything, there was none of this nonsense. Too many people complain, and they don't want to step as a resident to volunteer and try to get things solved, so. I'm pissed that people aren't giving you a break, every one of you are new. Says Teresa, she's an old timer. Give him some breathing room.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Stone. Yes, Mr. Kounis.
Gary Kounis, C section, I'm going to throw some numbers at you. This is off the current water bill. According to the city, our contracted price for garbage pickup is $32.23 a month per household. Yet, on the water bill, it's $33.30, which is a $1.07 difference. That raises $770,000 per year. Where's that going? Not going to the garbage people. Stormwater raises $1.9 million a month, or $23.6 million a year. Where's that money going? If you take that three-year period, that's over $70 million. If you take the total package of the water bill, not including the water used or the sewage used, that raises $63.3 million a year. I asked the vice mayor, what happened to the $70 million that Holland promised by the year 2024 that was added to the swale for maintenance of the canals and swales? She gets a letter back, "Oh, it was used for pipes going into the canals." I, myself, and a few others drove around looking, asked people on next door, nobody remembers any pipes being replaced. The concrete still has the rust stains on it and the old grates that have never been moved because they don't have scratch marks. Ground wasn't dug up, and the erosion is still at the end of the pipes in the canals. Hence, pipes were never replaced. So, where'd the $70 million go? Very strange. Think the individual involved in that shouldn't even work for the city because he has no qualifications to be in this city, to have that job. The golf course, ever since 2007, the cost of running that thing, the $1 million a year, was hidden in the maintenance budget. So, over that period of time to now is $17 million. Apparently, somebody's been put in charge of that, and we now lost $3.5 million on that golf course. That individual shouldn't have that job either. He had no qualifications for it, couldn't even run his own business at home. Ran it down in the ground, went bankrupt. We need to do something, because these numbers are wrong, and we're being taken advantage of. And that's off the current water bill. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kounis. Yes, ma'am.
Leslie Johnson, Palm Coast. Bear with me. You're gonna get it, you're gonna get it, I couldn't resist. Because of the people who came before y'all, okay? You're dealing with a lot of anger, a lot of mess that you're cleaning up, a lot of problems. Thank you, all of you, from the bottom of my heart, for attempting to weed out these problems and to find out solutions that are acceptable to all of us. It's not going to be an easy job, as my father used to tell my brother, "You're in a heap of trouble, boy," okay? And it's going to come out, and our neighbors are going to be angry, they are, okay? You know it, you've heard it tonight. But thank you again for working with our neighbors. The most important thing that we can learn from this is the way we've always done it doesn't work anymore. And I think you're finding that out, okay? And so, we need to clean house from the bottom up. And in the words of a great and wise man, we, the people, do demand a forensic audit. And that's a practice audit from my perspective, from the policies, the procedures of the folks who answer the phone, to the folks who answer to the people, to y'all, to everybody. We need to look at what has not been working and come to solutions for that which will work for us. And so, again, bear with our neighbors as we work out the anger, because it's not necessarily to you, but thank you again for allowing us a way to reach you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Shelley, is that right? Darlene Shelley.
Yes, Darlene Shelley, Hidden Lakes. With grace, I come before you to say that now is the time to finally take the action required to protect the safety, health, and welfare of the residents of Palm Coast and Flagler County. We have the right to the peaceful enjoyment of our homes, to drink clean water free from lead and contaminants, to breathe fresh air that will not make us sick, and enjoy a healthy environment without the constant nuisance noise from training flight schools stealing our peace, threatening our quality of life, and lowering our home values. As the officials that we elected to the City of Palm Coast Council, please act now to protect your residents. amend the nuisance noise ordinance to include protection from the harmful, repetitive, and unsafe decibels of noise from excessive training-flight-school aircraft squadrons circling hundreds of times daily over our densely populated and noise-sensitive Palm Coast. This simple change compiled with Flagler County B.O.C.C. amendment of the county noise ordinance and an update to their outdated 2008 airport rules and regulations, and imposing a unilateral and significant monetary usage fee for low approach and touch-and-go maneuvers on each operation in excess of one takeoff and one landing per day. This will immediately end 90% of the nuisance, noise, pollution, lead, quality of life, safety, health, and welfare concerns caused by excessive training-flight-school traffic over Palm Coast and Flagler County. I, for one, do not trust the FAA to guarantee that our water is clean and safe, and I don't believe that this council should either. And I do not trust the county to do what they were mandated to do in receipt of the grants that they have been receiving and are yet to still receive. I'm reading from here, 2009 Flagler County Airport Environmental Assessment, where it addresses environmental impacts, including water resources, noise, and air quality. I'm just going to address the water resources because that was kind of a topic tonight. What are the potential impacts to both ground and surface water? The airport is located near the northern boundary of the federally designated Volusia Floridian Soul Source Aquifier. I'm not sure if you're aware of that, but that should really play into your assessment of the situation. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shelley, yes, sir.
Well, I guess, I'm the last one?
Mark Webb. As of this moment, yes, sir.
Palm Coast. Well, per the document, after public speaking, the meeting's over. Bringing grace, I'd like to thank the city manager. I was one of those few that attended the utility meeting last week. Mayor, you were there. And it scared me terribly. $240 million, and that's an estimate. I scrubbed through our website, and I could not find that presentation. I don't know whether it was videoed. The link that she put up for the access of information that the public desperately needs to understand what's going on was only up for a minute, and I couldn't find it. So, we need to inform our city residents of the dire need to understand the issues we're facing with these water plants and the need to improve them. Underlying every conversation tonight has been people concerned with utilities. Every single person, even the decision with, going forward with the road movement, had to do with fear of spending that utility money. We desperately need to improve our communication with the residents on the why, the reason, the long-term fear and issues with fixing that water system. Because I can tell you right now, the underlying belief is that the 6,000 homes that we approved are caused our water system to fail, and now we have to spend $240 million. million dollars. And if you do the math, over a five-year period, that's four-hundred dollars a year per resident. We just got hit with a twelve-dollar a month on our FPL for hurricane impact and people are struggling. So I present to you feedback of a desperate need to communicate on the largest project that you five are gonna be faced while you're up on that diocese, fixing that water, explaining, finding help externally when external money is being cut underneath us. I spoke to some of the engineers that night, talented people that had phenomenal information. They shared with me fifty percent of the materials that we even need to start. We don't even know where they are. And tariffs and cutbacks and all of this stuff, so I'm pleading with you to understand and embark on this huge challenge and look at all the options. I was talking to a guy the other day, says, have we considered selling it? You could do that? You mean, we could actually make money on our water system and turn it over to a private...
All right, sir. You're desperately over time. Let's go.
Okay. Well, thank you for your time. You're gonna hear about it for the next four months, unfortunately.
Yes, thank you, sir. Yes, Mr. Carr.
Steve Carr, Palm Coast. I want to thank the city for their project of the traffic calming plan that they're trying to put, they're working on for Palm Coast. I can see that it works. And it's slowed the traffic down where kids are more safe in the neighborhood, and it also slowed the traffic down so people can get out of their driveways. I really appreciate it. Also, just a thing about safety, the other night, there was an emergency vehicle that had stopped on Florida Park Drive and they had people out directing traffic. I'm just wondering, is there some possible way that when these first responders get out to direct traffic like that, could they put some kind of LED lights on their vest? Make it easier to see them? I mean, I know it's reflective, yes, but I would just think some LED lights that would say, hey, I am here. Just a thought. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Carr. Anyone else? Seeing no one come forward, I'm gonna close public participation. My goodness, you guys are killing me. Through another. Okay, I'll bring it back to the diocese for discussion about members of the city council, not only agenda. Who's first? Mr. Gambero?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm sorry, Councilman Gambero.
No problem.
What you got?
Okay, so, like the mayor said, we hear you, and especially when it comes to infrastructure and the challenges that we have. Tomorrow morning at ten a.m., at, what is it, Two Utility Drive, we're gonna be hosting Mr. Barry Cotton, the district director for Senator Rick Scott. I want him to see exactly our challenges. I want him to understand it. And then we're gonna bring Senator Scott out to do the same. And then we're gonna talk about the options about these grants and where, what their status is and how we can quickly attack and put in for these grants with the senator's support. More than one of the council members, you know, expressed interest in attending, so it would be, it will be a public meeting. And so if anybody here would like to attend to learn more, to your point, sir, please, please show up, okay? I think we're getting a lot done. We're hitting singles every week. You know, we don't have to hit a homerun all the time, but I, you know, I'm really enjoying working with everybody here on the council. And for everybody that came here tonight to speak, we hear, we hear your feedback and we're gonna work through it. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Ms., Councilman Miller?
Yes, Mr. Mayor, thank you. Got a lot during commentary, so I'm just trying to work through it here. Mr. Stansel, obviously, you know, we've talked about the issues in Seminole Woods in terms of traffic, so we're still looking at that and trying to get answers for that. Ms. Perkins, in terms of the forensic audit, when I met with our city auditors, I mentioned this to them and want to, you know, hear more from them about what that entails and the cost. They did mention that it's, it's a pretty high cost to go through a forensic audit, so we'll have to look at that and kind of balance that with, you know, what do we hope to gain versus what it's gonna cost us in the long run. For Mr. Price, for the commercial vehicles, I think we're gonna workshop that at some time in the near future. And then Nathan, I'm not, I didn't get your last name, but for the pilot chicken, I know that's been brought up before, so I don't have all that information. That was at a previous council, but, so I'd like to hear more, to get information on that and potentially, you know, talk about that again. Mr. Lang, I think the streetlight thing should be something that we can, we can fix fairly easily. And then Gary, we'll talk about the difference between the website and the bill. I'm not sure what that discrepancy is there, but I'm sure the city manager can let us know about that. And then, sorry, there's a lot. I think that's, that's pretty much it, I think, for me.
All right. Thank you, Councilman. If you find something else, you can come back to it. Mr. Stevens? Councilman Stevens?
I have nothing.
All right. Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. So I will not cover all the things that you did. Thank you for that, Councilman Miller, because I had a lot of the same notes, so thank you. The turn lanes, we're doing a study on, as a part of our strategic action plan, to do a study citywide of where we should have turn lanes, so that is coming. Seminole Woods buffer, I actually did look into that for another resident and I have that information. So if anybody wants that information, I believe it was you, sir, that asked about that. You're welcome to email me and I can send you what I have about that buffer specifically. There is a reason that land is cleared. It's not because they've gotten rid of the buffer, but I can send you the specifics on that if you, if you reach out to me. And then the last thing, I also, I fully support readdressing the backyard chickens, of course, within reason, and putting all the parameters in place that we talked about before, but happy to bring that back up. The last thing I did want to bring up, that we are having, Ms. Shelley brought up the airport noise, we are having council bring to us a presentation on what we can do as far as our power as a city to help with the airport. I mean, we're very much handcuffed between the FAA and the county. It's not a city airport, obviously, it's a county airport. So there are things we just, we want to do, but I don't know that we can. But because we have not been briefed on that, we have asked council to do that, so that will be coming before city council. That's all I had on public comment. Really quickly, though, we had an ordinance come before us a few weeks ago. It was not the, there were amendments that were to be made. We did not have the red line version. We asked for the red line version. We were presented with that tonight. And because we saw that red line version, there were things that popped out to me that obviously I wanted to change. I would ask for consensus from this council as a policy that when there's going to be an amendment presented by staff to any ordinance or resolution, that we are presented with the red line version. Because we need to know what changes are being made and it's, it's too hard, you'd have to look at the two documents side by side and go word for word. So I think it makes sense that we just have the red line version every time as a policy when there's going to be any resolution or ordinance change in the future.
You have my consent.
Absolutely.
Okay. City manager?
Understood.
Thank you.
That was all I had. Thank you.
Done? Wow. Okay, city manager, could you please, that presentation that we did last week, can you make sure that that site's up and running? Share it on the Facebook page and all that stuff?
Yes, absolutely. And Brittany and I are looking to record that as well to try and help get the information out on the utility rates. So thank you, Mr. Webb.
Thank you for that. Commercial vehicles, we've already discussed that, it's coming before the council, we're gonna take a look at that. The gentleman did bring up some valid points down on the south end. Until we get those, those turn lanes and stuff, what we need to do down there to make it safer, those crosswalks with the flashing lights is a pretty good thing over and, off of Palm Coast Parkway going towards the bridge. It's, it's pretty good. And also the stop signs for pedestrians to stop on the walk and not walk into the, the other day, I know someone almost hit somebody because the person was trying to go across the crosswalk while someone was turning, you know? It takes a lot, you know? Kids and people riding bikes, they need to be courteous and obey the rules of the road. They're supposed to yield. So we can, we can look into that. I have no problem with that. I will tell the people of Palm Coast this right now. We, when we incorporated as a city, we started out in debt because of water. We did. The whole process, and in that presentation that the city manager put together, it shows how the debt has accumulated over the years and how, how it actually started. So, like I said, we are working the best we can with the situation we've been handed. So just give us a little leeway or, like I said, grace to get the job done. One thing I would like to ask, I'd like consensus among the council. I've been approached by the VFW and I'm sure it's the same with the other clubs, I call Old Kings Road North, Club Row. VFW is asking, they want a variance so they can put up one of those ticker tapes on their sign, just like the schools have, to let people know what's going on. And I think, I think it's, I think it's valid. I think we should be able to do a variance for Club Row, specifically for those types of sign, within a certain parameter. And I think the adjutant or maybe something from the VFW, he sent me a standard size, you know, specifications for the sign. So I'd like to see if I could get consensus to maybe, yes, sir. Well, hold on, Legal's got something for me.
So, Mr. Mayor, what I would advise is that the VFW wants to go down that road, they put in an application and have, work with city staff to see if that's something that can be done.
Okay. So, city manager, can we work with the VFW and Club Row, so to speak?
Absolutely, Mayor. If you have some liaisons, we could do a soft handoff and coordinate with our sign ordinance and go through that process as Mr. Duffy mentioned.
Okay, thank you. They, they've been on me for a couple of months about that. I finally got around to it. That's all I have. Anyone else? We're working on what? Three hours? With the, okay. So let's move on. City, city attorney, any matters not on the agenda?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. As you council are tracking, there was a claim filed with the city on November sixth regarding the Burt Harris Act. We, as a city, have a requirement to respond within ninety days. And in that response, under the statute, we are required to offer a settlement offer. Working with the attorney that's assigned to the case, Mr. Garganese, we looked at it in our response and we're looking for direction from this council. We narrowed it down that we recommend there are two options for this council. Option one is where the city council can offer in their settlement offer that pretty much to say, you're gonna stay put with the previous ordinance that was passed regarding this property, twenty-twenty-four dash zero-one ordinance. Or option two is that, under the Burt Harris Act, you are allowed to offer them a more density to the property. And when we're looking at density, Mr. Garganese had city staff from, look at the, this current property that's under review, from a high-level review, to see if that is even an option. And city staff looked at it and gave, from a high-level review, that additional two-hundred-and-nineteen units, single-family residents could be offered. That's a high-level review. They haven't really got into there, but that's something they looked at. So just to sum up what I'm looking for, direction from the city council, is that we are required to respond with our, regarding this claim. And in that, there are two options that we're recommending. Option one, you stay put with the ordinance that was passed, twenty-four, twenty-twenty-four dash zero-one, or you can offer in that settlement offer additional two-hundred-and-nineteen density units, that would be single-family residents. Standing by for any questions.
Okay. Thank you, sir. And for the, for the council, we've all been briefed on this and, and I wanna, and for the public, you have to understand, everything we do, until there's actually a case or litigation, correct, council, we have to do in open form. That's at a disadvantage to us as, you know, a legislative body. But I was here for all those meetings. And I know Councilwoman Pontiaria, the vice mayor, she was here during all those meetings. So without saying too much, and I'll defer to you for a second, Vice Mayor, those are our two options. Either we stay the course or we make an offer. So if you would like to say something, I'm more than willing to hear it. But those are our options right now until it goes into litigation.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor. So I was on the council during this entire process and it is my opinion, very strong opinion, that this is yet a third bite at an apple from a developer to try to get more density that they've never been entitled to, that they have no right to. For a little bit of historical process and factual kind of background on this, this initially, this cascade's development was a PUD from two thousand and five that was in the county. And that PUD was limited to four hundred and sixteen single-family dwelling units. The applicant slash developer then asked the city to be annexed into the city. We granted that annexation based on the fact that it was four hundred and sixteen single-family units. Now, I asked during that meeting, what's on the back end of this? What are you guys going to ask from us? Because inevitably, these developers often do come back and ask for more. And lo and behold, that's exactly what happened. So we annexed them in. And then they came back with a comp plan amendment application and a zoning application to add eight hundred and fifty dwelling units, some of which were multifamily. They also simultaneously filed a zoning change as well. Now, with that comp plan amendment, that obviously has to be approved by city council. There can be no comp plan amendment unless it's approved by city council. When they came before us and asked for this amendment, I was staunchly against it for the very reason that we have heard everybody talk about today: water. I pounded my fist and said, we cannot continue to annex in property and then double density. We have water problems in this city. The applicant stood at that podium right there and accused me of fearmongering. He called me a fearmonger and said, you are fearmongering, talking about the issues with water. Here we are, two years later, we are under the thumb of DEP because of our water issues. I also said, I am also concerned with the infrastructure for our roads and our traffic. Again, I am called a fearmonger and what did we hear today? We have traffic issues, we have road issues, we're paying six million dollars to widen roads. So I voted to not amend the comp plan, to keep it as is, to keep it with the four hundred and sixteen single-family units. The rest of council voted to allow the amendment. That was first read. Second read came back and we denied it. We kept them at the four hundred and sixteen units. They then filed a motion for rehearing because it was their allegation that they did not mean to include what we've called a hook piece into this comp plan amendment. This was their first bite, well, I should say their second bite. Their first bite to try to get double density was the comp plan amendment. Their second bite was to say, we want a rehearing because there was this little piece of the property called a hook piece that we didn't mean to include in the property, and so we need a whole rehearing to remove that hook piece and still ask for the same density. The fact of the matter is, the same applicant that called me a fearmonger also stood at that podium and tried to justify the increase in density because the hook piece was included when it wasn't previously included. So he said, you're lying. It's not a double in density because we've got this hook piece out here that's also entitles us to ninety-eight extra units. So on the one hand, he's saying, oh, we didn't mean to include the hook piece because we want another bite at the apple, but previously he said we did include the hook piece and that's why you lied and said that we weren't doubling density because this hook piece actually gives us ninety-eight extra units. So when it was convenient for him, the hook piece was not included, and when it was convenient for him at another time, the hook piece was included. These developers are now taking a third frivolous bite at the apple. That's what this is. And I bring up that history because I think it's important that we know what we are actually dealing with. We're not dealing with facts that support this claim. We're not dealing with law that supports this claim. We're dealing with somebody who is trying to bastardize our system. And I cannot abide by that. When I look at the letter, the Burt Harris letter that was sent to our attorney, it is so hollow and truly lacks any merit whatsoever. I'm gonna read it because it's legally insufficient, insufficient on its face. I'm going to read it because it's legally insufficient, insufficient on its face. It says that the, that they are entitled to this comp plan amendment change. Because it says, as the ordinance acknowledges, the limit of 416 dwelling units is a change from the comprehensive plan amendment as applied for and initially approved, in parentheses, and as recommended for approval by city staff, establishing Bern Dog's entitlement to 850 units. I got news for the attorney that wrote this letter. City staff doesn't have the ability to approve a comp plan amendment. Only this council does. So their assertion that, first of all, staff agreed to this, which I can't, staff's putting in front of us an application is not their, their tacit approval. It's just putting in front of us an application. So first of all, staff didn't approve anything. Secondly, they legally can't approve anything. Now, a Burt Harris claim requires a current entitlement or a current right to something that the government then steps in and inordinately burdens. That's what the statute says. First of all, they weren't entitled to anything. They had no right to anything other than the 416 units. They had no reasonable expectation to anything further than that pursuant to case law out of the 5th DCA, which is binding in this county, that says, if city council has to approve a comp plan amendment, there can be no reasonable expectation to anything more than what you already have. That is the case law. The original case was a Pont Sintland case out of Volusia County, who's a very neighbor of us. The trial court actually granted the Burt Harris claim in that case and the 5th DCA, which is binding on us, reversed it and said, no, because city council needed to approve something. Therefore, you had no reasonable expectation to anything more than what the original comp plan gave you. So not only do the facts not support what this applicant and what this attorney are trying to threaten us with, but the law's not on their side either. This is an attempt to bully us, as some of our residents have said, into folding. They have no respect for this council, for our attorney, and for our residents. And I will not stand for it. And I am hoping that this council will not stand for it either. Not for nothing. If we were to approve this, approve, offering them any more density, it opens up the door for further applicants to not only try to do what they did before, which was file, file for a frivolous motion for rehearing that also wasn't supported by the facts or the law, but also to then threaten us with Burt Harris so they can get more density. So I am hoping that this council will say no. And I feel so strongly about this, in fact, that if we do say no and they file a complaint against our city, I think that we need to file a motion for sanctions against them beneath Florida statute 57.105, which allows us to sanction both attorneys and litigants for frivolous claims. Because not, neither the law nor the facts are on their side. Thank you, Mayor Yild.
Thank you. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anyone else on the council have anything to say regarding this matter?
I do, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
So I just wanted to say that I came into this meeting and, and with the information that, that we've been presented, kind of torn, you know, with mitigating risk and representing our residents in the way that they want to be represented in, in this community. And so I, I thank you, Vice Mayor, for, for your comments because, you know, I'm open to persuasion in these cases and I think you did a very good job of that. You know, again, my biggest concern is risk and, and trying to reduce that, you know, a price tag of multi-million dollars, you know, is a lot for us to bear. We don't have the money for the things that we need right now. So if we had to pay that, you know, it'd be, it'd be bad for us. But, you know, I'm inclined to, to agree with the Vice Mayor on this.
Thank, thank you, council. Councilman, yes, Councilman Gambaro?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And thank you, Vice Mayor, for, for your inputs and, you know, all, all but yourself. You know, we, we were there, you know, sitting on this dais for this meeting. But, so, so the perspective that I bring, okay, and I'm going to ask this question for any litigation that we get into is, you know, I spent a career in government assessing and assuming risk for the lives of our American patriots under my command. And I've articulated risk regarding policy options for multiple Secretaries of Defense, National Security Advisors, Directors, Directors of Intelligence, and yes, the current President of the United States. Therefore, on this matter, I'm going to ask the question, Councilmember Miller touched on it. You know, what are the risks? What are the risks if we lose this? Okay? The property owners claiming 12 million losses could be more with legal fees. Our, our League of Cities insurance policy only covers 300,000. Okay? I mean, that's a risk that we're taking. And there are some municipalities that have been successful against this kind of case, but there's also, I mean, just Google it, there've been, there've been some municipalities that have lost. I think Pont Sintland's one example, but, I mean, on appeal, they brought it back. But if we are to lose this case, how would we as a city and our taxpayers pay for that kind of loss? When we're already in the hole and other, you know, and, and other areas of our operational budget. I've got the profit of loss statements here for the rest of our parks and recreation that I'm going to bring up at the next meeting, or, you know, the next several meetings. We need to take a look at that. All right? We're not running things well as it is. And so my question is, Counselor, what, what is the risk for us not winning this thing? They not fight? I'm, I'm asking the question.
Councilman Gambaro, I, I think really, I may have let the Vice Mayor go a little bit too far because, like I said, this is open forum and it just allows the opposing team more information if you, if you continue to talk, discuss it in open forum. And that's just the nature of the beast and the law.
Where else are we going to talk about this?
Quick, quick, quick follow-up with the council and then we'll move on. He can, answer it, answer it, please.
Yeah, so, yeah, valid question. So without getting too much into details, the, the risk is, you know, at least is what they're asking for. That's the risk. And, you know, if, if in a scenario that we do not have a claim that goes our way, you're looking at what they're asking for, at least the minimum, and then possible attorney fees. But I don't want to comment any more than that. But that's, that's what you're, you're going against.
Thank you, council.
Okay, so the question to the council is, are you willing to assume the risk of losing if this thing goes bad? That, I think that's the question for me. And if the answer is yes, then I'll go along with the rest of the group and we'll figure it out on the other end. But I just wanted, I just want to be clear, the risk associated with not winning this thing, whether at, you know, at the court or on appeal or wherever the case may be.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Mayor, we're going to put this to a vote?
We, we are going to have to make a motion. Just give me one second. Can I get my two cents in? While I was not on the council at the time, I was here for every single one of those meetings. I was. And I got beat up for not standing up. But I'm, I thank God now that my public record of my comments are not on because I saw this coming. So with that, I would say, can I, Vice Mayor, would you like to make a motion?
I will make a motion to respond with a no. We will keep the ordinance as is.
Can I get a second for that motion?
I second the motion.
Miss, Councilman Stephen has, has seconded the motion. Any more discussion?
So I just wanted to be clear, we're assuming this risk?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, that's what I was gonna.
Yes, sir.
You know, I'm, I'm taking your lead, Vice Mayor, on this. So you feel confident and...
Well, I, I don't want to, I don't want to, so the reason I went on, everything that I said tonight, I've said in public record in previous hearings. So, so I don't want to get into my inner thoughts as far as the, what I will say is, I will leave it at what I said about the facts and the wall.
Okay.
Yes, Vice Mayor, thank you. And I'd also like, I look forward to, if we do go to trial with these people, I, I will love to see the testimony of the people that they said negotiated that deal pre-annexation. I, I happily open up that court for them to come and testify. So with that, I will open up the public comments, please.
I think we are voting no.
Thank you, ma'am.
Dennis Stansel, Seminole Woods. I live in the area that they're talking about here. We were here for every one of those meetings except for the ones that happened before we moved here. We should tell these people to pound sand, stand your ground. And every one of those meetings where they had hundreds of people coming forward fighting this process. It's all on your video. You've got tons and tons of evidence right on your videos. So go for it. Tell them to pound sand.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Perkins, Mrs. Perkins, I'm sorry.
I'm all for the no. Thank you for the explanation. I'm sitting there though, ready to lose my mind because why did you come up and give all of the, you know, the background, bringing up the law, bringing up the explanation? Where's our attorney? He just said you had two choices. That was it. He did not give the ex, I mean, he should have been, doesn't he, aren't, I know attorneys, it's up to you guys to decide A or B, but you should be getting the explanation. If you go A, then this is where they stand. B is this. I know you guys get to weigh that out, but I don't understand why that was not brought forward.
Ms. Perkins, all that was discussed with each member of the, of the city council?
Separately? So you guys all understood all of that?
Yes, ma'am. We just can't.
Oh, okay, well.
We just can't have a product.
Then I don't understand. This is a no-brainer. I understand bringing up the risk, but come on, at this point in time, we need to grow a pair.
Thank you, ma'am.
You know? Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Mr. Stansel.
Mark Stansel. I was here for every, every meeting and we, we fought, I want to commend Councilwoman Pontieri. She fought hard to, to, to help the people of Palm Coast. You know, I mean, it was frantic. And, you know, our mayor, not to spread disparaging, I'm not going to say anything, but he had an interest in that because his business partner was involved in, in that. So, you know, there was a little crooked stuff there, but she fought and she helped us. All, hundreds of people were here. And they tried to say, well, they did, they didn't sign this one paper. Well, if you look at the video real close, I've got a copy of that sign with that guy's signature, saying, I got it right here. You know, you got to say no. It would be wrong because if you say yes, it's going to happen again and again and again. And then you'll have no power. No power. You've got to stop it. Nip it in the bud.
Thank you, sir. Yes, ma'am.
Good evening, Karen Ashman, Seminole Woods. Mr. Mayor, I want to thank you. The atmosphere is so much different and everyone on the, on the council. Vice Mayor, my money's with you. I want to thank you for your passion. I want to thank you for how you fought for Seminole Woods. I was going to build in Jacksonville and only God had me go to somebody to sell a house to tell me, have you heard of Palm Coast? You need to go look. You know what sold me? Seminole Woods Boulevard. And Joy can tell you, the day they cleared that land, I get emotional. I went home and cried that they took down all those trees. And the water, every morning I go to brush my teeth, my water smells like sulfur. I don't even rinse my mouth out with the water in Palm Coast. I can't. I'm scared. I don't breathe it because I'm scared. So we need to focus on infrastructure. We need to stand our ground. I'm with the new vote. I'm not going to drag one. Thank you, every, thank you. Thank you to everyone.
Thank you, ma'am.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Leslie Johnson, also of Palm Coast. The last time that I spoke tonight, I said that the way that we have always done it isn't going to work anymore. I know the parties that you're speaking. I understand the case that you're talking about. This is their method of operation. What they do is they come in and they go, ooh, let's buy this plot of land. And then they come back and want to rezone. Okay? And they do this time and time and time again. They just did this over at Flagler Beach, the same entities. It's time. It's time. Now you've got two mayoral sessions before you, Mr. Mayor, okay, that rolled out the red carpet to these people to come back and wah, 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 we're going to either rezone or we're going to sue you. Or wah, 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 we want more additional units or we're going to sue you. How many times? And if you allow this, city council, this is before you. If you allow this red carpet to continue, you just roll down the precedent again from the previous mayor, the previous mayor before that, and I dare say probably the mayor before that as well, long before my time. So I can't speak to that. But I can tell you, it's time. It's time we quit doing what we've always been doing. It's time to stand up, have a backbone, and say no. And if you ask our neighbors, I think they will agree, no is the proper answer. Thank you for being on the ball with this. And thank you for the consideration.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. David, I live in Seminole Woods. I've only been here about three months now. And I got to tell you, the changes that I've seen in the last three months have been crazy. I go down Seminole Woods, as someone else said, everything's ripped down. And the thing is, these big corporations come in, these big builders come in, they're doing this all over America. They come in, they grab the land, they build mega houses, cookie cutters, house after house after house. And you know what they do when they're done? They leave. They don't care about the traffic problems. They don't care about the water issues. They don't care about anything. They want the money and that's it. And they're going to take it and they're going to run. So I'm going to tell you something that my daddy used to tell me. Don't get in bed with the devil and then get mad and complain when he takes the covers. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
James D. Yeah, once again, Ms. Teresa's right on point. She's got the evidence. She's got them dead to rights. She done her research. She did a great job with the Alphen Bonds explaining that last year. This is why she's an asset to your council and she's your Vice Mayor. So I say just give them hell. Fight the SOBs.
Thank you, sir. Any more public comment? Yes, ma'am.
I wasn't planning on speaking tonight. Jessica Matthews, Seminole Woods. Ms. Pontieri has not steered us wrong. She called it every single shot. You are questioning whether or not it will cost more if you were to deny this. But the truth is, it's going to cost more the opposite way. If you allow them to do this, it's going to set precedence for every other builder. We have come before you multiple times, as far as the council, not you necessarily. And by the way, it's very refreshing seeing you all here. A nice new council. You need to, you need to deny this. This is just, that's the right thing to do. I'm going to leave you with one thing. Colin Powell made decisions on the 40/70 rule. If you had less information on 40, 40% less of information, it was a bad choice. The letter that Ms. Pontieri read today is a slam dunk. Make your decision on that.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, Ms. Cook?
Joy Cook, Seminole Woods. Most of you know me. This is my baby, or I should say nightmare. Thank you. I just, before all of you got here, it was going to be four-story buildings 80 feet from my backyard. That was my nightmare. So we came out, Seminole Woods, we all came out, and this is the first victory, I believe, that this developer did not win on that property. This, he wants his victory because he lost this one because of Pontieri. Okay? This man has 18 other properties in Palm Coast that are just waiting to be developed. This can start a preference if we don't end it now. Make your vote count. Make that last council's vote count. Don't let him take away your power. Once that's gone, they're going to roll over yous. But let me thank you in advance for your consideration on this because I want to be able to sleep at night again. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Any further public comments on this matter? Seeing no one come forward, I'll bring him back to the dais for final thoughts. Or anyone have any thoughts, comments? Councilman Miller?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I just wanted to, you know, I want to be careful with the celebration of the win because I view this as both ways are...
What I'm talking about?
No, no.
Please.
I'm not specifically addressing you. I'm, I'm just saying, I, I view this as kind of a lose-lose in both situations. There's kind of negatives for both sides of this. So, you know, we'll continue to try to represent you in the right way going forward and all of that. But like I said, there's, there's negatives for both outcomes.
If I may, Mayor, just to piggyback, I agree with you. I don't, I don't want to be wrapped up in litigation. I don't want to be sued by a developer. I don't have a desire to, you know, have us embroiled in litigation, but I'm also... I don't have a desire to, you know, have us embroiled in litigation, but I'm also not going to roll over. And, you know, I think it's important that when we're weighing, when we're doing a cost-benefit analysis, which I have to do with clients of my own all the time, I have done that cost-benefit analysis. And without getting into any more detail, I agree with you that I don't want to be in litigation. It's not my, I would love to not be, have a nasty gram sent to us from an attorney. That would be fantastic, but that's what we're dealing with. And so, we have to do that cost-benefit analysis, and that's why I've made the motion I've made.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Anything else? I'm sorry, Ray, Councilman Stevens, I'm sorry, Ray. Ms. Cook, so, can you restate the motion? Can you read the motion that was made by Vice Mayor?
So, the Vice Mayor made a motion to go with option one, whereas in our settlement offer, we will stay input with ordinance 2024-01.
Thank you, council. Call to vote?
Vice Mayor Pontieri.
Yes.
Councilmember Gambaro.
Yes.
Councilmember Miller.
Yes.
Councilmember Stevens.
Yes.
Mayor Norris.
Yes.
The motion passes unanimously.
Okay. Moving on to matters, discussion about a city manager, matters not on the agenda. Please, city manager, close it out for us.
Happy early birthday, Ms. Pontieri. That's all.
Is that it? We're good? Can I get a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Second.